Good afternoon, everyone. Let me welcome all of you to the Orange County Board of County Commission Meeting of October the 28th, 2025. As we begin our proceedings this afternoon, let me remind all of you, please silence your electronic devices as we begin the meeting. As we start, I'm going to ask Commissioner Michael Scott to come forward. He will be introducing a guest that will be bringing the invocation. Following the invocation, Commissioner Scott, if you will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. After the Pledge of Allegiance, our Communications Division Director, Dr. Jeffrey Williamson, will be reading Proclamations Recognizing Orange County Recycles Day and Week of the Family. And then he'll introduce a presentation of the Congress for the New Urbanism. Mr. John Nolan will be coming forward to present a medal award. With that, at this time, Commissioner Scott, you are recognized.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. Or good afternoon, I gotta adjust. We remixed the meetings a little bit. So I'm going to read a bio for my guest, but I do want to make just a few brief remarks. As Mayor shared, we are celebrating the Week of the Family, and we'll have a presentation about this proclamation right here that talks about family. I also think about family as community and neighbors. We're also ending Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and our theme here in the county was Pink is the New Orange. But I share that for a few reasons. My sister, when she first went to college, she got diagnosed with breast cancer. And then having breast cancer, they shared that, you know, she wouldn't be able to have kids. Fortunately, my sister was able to have two daughters. And I share that, Miles, if you want to show them a picture, if you don't mind? I share that because my niece just turned 18. Likewise, when you talk about the Week of the Family and you talk about a community, we are all neighbors. We all have different opinions, different political views, but one thing we can agree on is that we care about our family, our friends, and the people that we love. And so I just wanted to kind of highlight that. It also segues into Diwali, and the theme for that is new beginnings, victory over light, victory of light over darkness, and good over evil. And so with that, I'm going to read a bio for Priest Ashok Patel that will bring us our invocation and underscore why, no matter how crazy you might see a post on social media, no matter what, you watch this news channel or that news channel, or whether you have any number of letters behind your name, just remember, we do this for our family. We are all neighbors, we are all Floridians, we're, some of us live in Orange County, others live other places because things are a little expensive, but we can find something to agree on if we take a moment to have the conversation. So I'm happy to open up the meeting today with Priest Ashok Patel. He was raised in London after relocating from Nairobi where he was born. Ashok maintained a strong connection to his Indian heritage and Hindu faith. His life course changed dramatically at the age of 21 with the blessing of BAP's spiritual leader Pramuk Swami Maharaj. He left a promising medical career, they make good money in a medical career, to become a novice priest, which is very admirable. And following his ordination, he traveled to India where he immersed himself in a rigorous study of Hindu scriptures, comparative religions, and Sanskrit. This profound journey and dedication to life of humility and prayer became the foundation for his future in current work in teaching and sharing the traditions of Hinduism with communities globally, particularly with a focus of youth and marginalized populations. What's not in the bios, they have good food at the temple, you should definitely visit one. Ashok's work extends beyond his pastoral duties and includes extensive community engagement and interfaith leadership. He has organized significant international events, including a Cultural Festival of India in New Jersey and an All-World Religions Conference in New York. Now based in Orlando, Ashok is deeply involved in numerous social and community service initiatives through the local BAPs chapter. They do a walk at Lake Keola, which is really cool, also has good food at the walk. And they organize medical camps for the uninsured, they contribute to food banks, which we now know is even more important, and they coordinate toy collections to give to communities and families in need. And for his outstanding leadership and positive social impact, he was honored with the inclusion of the Congressional Record in 2023. And he also serves as Director at the Ossila Chamber of Commerce, where he supports and promotes local businesses. And so with that, I'd like to invite Priest Ashok Patel for our invocation.
I've been physically vertically challenged all my life, so I need to be in the rostrum down. Thank you so much for standing. Mayor Demings, Commissioner Scott, thank you so much for inviting BAPs, or just BAPs, for this invocation address today. BAPs is the largest Hindu organization outside of India. We are rooted in the ancient sacred teachings of India, and it is from this tradition that I will share verses that speak our shared humanity and the desire for peace, prosperity, and unity. These prayers were originally passed down from generation to generation in the ancient language of Sanskrit and are a testament to the timeless spiritual truths that connect us all. They seek guidance from a divine compassionate power known by many names, names that resonate within various cultures and traditions across the world. Hinduism offers a perspective that we are all divine beings navigating a human experience. With all of its challenges and aspirations, with this in mind, the verses chosen for today are universal in their message. We will hear prayers for righteous purpose, for universal peace, and for collective growth as one human family, and this will also be a lesson in Sanskrit for all of you. You will hear two words continuously, one is Om. As Hindus, we believe that Om was the first sound created when the universe was created, so it symbolizes the form of God. Then you will hear the word Shanti. Shanti translates as peace, rest, tranquility, and inner calmness. So the first prayer we regard as Stuti. He who is adorned with eternal virtue, he who is all pervasive in the universe and beyond, he who is divine, he who grants all souls, all beings, all life with peace, with bliss in paradise, he who is the source of all that is sacred and holy, he whose glory is sung of in scripture to that divine being known as Sahajanand, the one who is self-blessed and to Mulakshad, who is the path, the teacher, and the ideal, I forever bow and seek guidance, the Sanskrit. Om. Shri Matesh Guna Shalinam Chidachidi, Vyaptam Chadi, Vyakrutim, Jeeves Akshara Mukta Koti Sukhadam, Nekavatara Dipam, Kneyam Sri Purushotamam Munivarer, Vedadikirtiyam Vibhum, Tanmula Akshara Yukthame Vasahaja, Nandam Chavan Desada. The peace prayer. May peace radiate across the sky as well as in the vastness of space beyond the sky. May there be peace on our earth, in the oceans, and in all living beings. May there be peace in the forests, in all that grows, may there be tranquility in the environment that we reside in. May peace flow throughout the entire universe and the Creator. And may there always be peace in all humanity, in all life. Let there be nothing but peaceful coexistence. Om. Dyo Shanti Ranta, Riksha Guhu Shanti, Hiprathivi, Shanti Rapha, Shanti Ro Khadaya, Shantihi, Vanaspataya, Shanti Vishwa Devaha, Shanti Brahma Shantihi, Sarvagun, Shanti Shanti Reva, Shanti Sama, Shanti Redi. Om, Shantihi, Shantihi, Shantihi. In conclusion, we pray for our societal leaders, our mayor, our commissioners, our administrators. Let there be perfection in our community. The complete Creator created perfectness. From completeness comes completeness. Completeness is infinite, ever existing, and so is the complete being known as God. May together we be protected. May together we be nourished. May together we strive forward with great energy. May our study together be brilliant and effective. May there be no damaging disputes among us. May none be jealous of the other. Om. Om, Sahnavavatu, Sahnubunaktu, Sahviriyam Karvavahay, Tejasvinavadita Mastu, Maavidvishavahay. Om, Shantihi, Shantihi, Shantihi. Thank you, everybody, thank you. Let me take your seats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Priest Patel. As the mayor mentioned, there are two proclamations for today than a special presentation. The first proclamation is for Orange County Recycles Day. Orange County Recycles Day. And the proclamation reads, whereas America Recycles Day is a nationally recognized day dedicated to promoting and celebrating recycling in the United States, and whereas to focus the nation's attention on the importance of recycling, businesses, industries, government agencies, nonprofit organizations, and individuals have joined together to celebrate America Recycles Day and are encouraging their friends, neighbors, and coworkers to learn more about recycling options in their community and commit to recycling more materials. And whereas recycling is a sustainable practice, which helps support a circular economy that conserves natural resources, promotes green jobs, and diverts waste from landfill disposal. And whereas Orange County began collecting and processing recyclables back in 1990, and resident participation has increased over time. And whereas participating in America Recycles Day 2025 is one way residents can help raise awareness about the need to reduce waste by reusing, recycling, and buying recycled content products. And whereas in recognition of America Recycles Day, we will celebrate Orange County Recycles Day on Saturday, November 15th, 2025. And whereas, Orange County Recycles Day is an opportunity to remind residents to rededicate themselves to using our resources more wisely by reusing and recycling their materials that they purchase, which helps make Orange County a healthier place for future generations to enjoy. Now therefore, Jerry O. Demings, by virtue of the authority vested in him as Orange County Mayor, does hereby proclaim Saturday, November 15th, 2025, as Orange County Recycles Day in Orange County, Florida. Done and ordered this 28th day of October, 2025, signed by the mayor and all six members of the Board of County Commissioners. Accepting the proclamation is Kevin Simmons, Assistant Manager of the Solid Waste Division in Orange County's Utilities Department. Mr. Simmons.
Good afternoon, Mayor Demings, Commissioners. I am honored to join you today as we recognize November 15th, 2025, as Orange County Recycles Day. This year marks the 35th anniversary of this important community initiative. Since 1990, thanks to participation and commitment of our residents, Orange County has successfully diverted more than 1.7 million tons of materials from the landfill. This is a tremendous achievement, and it reflects the power of community action and responsible stewardship of our environment. Recycling continues to be a vital part of Orange County materials management strategy. It allows us to conserve natural resources, reduce landfill use, and transform items once considered waste into valuable new products. In short, recycling gives us the opportunity to make a lasting positive impact on our community and our planet, one household at a time. As part of our observance of Orange County Recycles Day, we'll host landfill tours on Saturday, November 15th. These tours offer residents a behind-the-scenes look at how waste is managed and why small choices like properly recycling at home make such a big difference. Residents can register for a tour by visiting our website at the Solid Waste Management Division. And today, we want to just thank you for your continued support and joining me today to receive this proclamation, our members of our recycling and communications team.
Simmons and Ed Torres, our Utilities Director, and all of our friends at Utilities Department. Our next proclamation is for Week of the Family. Week of the Family, and the proclamation reads, whereas the region has a vast array of different backgrounds and experiences, making it an essential part of the cultural and social fabric of our community. And whereas, Orange County recognizes that strong families are at the center of strong communities and operate best when open communication, unity, and unwavering support exist. And whereas, everyone has a role to play in a family's success and happiness, including neighborhood associations, churches, businesses, nonprofit agencies, policymakers, and our families themselves. And whereas, this year's Week of the Family theme, Families Support Each Other, provides an opportunity for all of us to explore the importance and impact of families on communities and how these bonds make us a stronger and more compassionate society. And whereas, during the Week of the Family, Orange County residents are encouraged to recognize the importance of spending time together and strengthening the relationships that matter most. Now therefore, Jerry O. Demings, by virtue of the authority vested in him as Orange County Mayor, does hereby proclaim the Week of the Family, November 1 through 8, 2025, Week of the Family in Orange County, Florida. Done and ordered this 28th day of October, 2025, signed by the mayor and all six members of the Board of County Commissioners. Receiving the proclamation, Melanie Williams, President, Week of the Family, for remarks. And I believe we also have Elizabeth Rider, Vice President, as well. So if you please come forward for recognition and to receive the proclamation. Ms. Rider.
Board of County Commissioners, Mayor Demings, thank you so much for this recognition. We appreciate your support throughout the years. The Week of the Family has been in existence for over 20, it lasts about three years. We're looking forward to celebrating our 25th year in 2027. And as, the more I work with our children in our schools, is the more I recognize that we do need that support structure. Our children need us. And our theme this year is Families Support Each Other, and that's what we have strived to do throughout the year. We started the year with our essay contest, and we had the Paula Hawkins Award, and we have the Grandparent Award. And then we're going to end the year, of course, with our Mayor's Family Fun Day. So I just want to thank you all for supporting us over the years. I want to thank Ms. Angela Chestang and her team for their constant support, and we just appreciate all the partners that work with us. We do work with a team of partners, many of whom are here today and will join us in their picture moment. Thank you so much.
Yes, just like our theme, we appreciate the support that you all have given us, especially all these years. And this year's Paula Hawkins Family Champion was Valerie Seidel, and she brought attention to people who don't get that support from the Children's Home Society, and how foster children were put out when they turned 18, no matter what. And so she volunteered and used her economist's skills and was able to present a plan to the legislature to let them know how it would benefit the whole state if there would be a bridge of finances and stuff to help support them as they make that step into adulthood that a lot of us have when we have strong families, but some people don't have, and how that's benefited. So we're so grateful for that, for that. And as Melanie said, we have the Mayor's Family Fun Day coming up, and so there's an awesome video that Willis has to share. If we could have our committee members come up, the mayor, and our partners and sponsors.
Family Fun Day, Saturday, November 1st, 10 to 2, Cypress Grove Park. Let's give our Week of the Family family another big round of applause. Thank you so much, Ms. Rider, Ms. Williams. And as the mayor said, we have one special presentation. And as the mayor said, we have one special presentation. For Congress for the Urbanism, John Nolan Medal. Very special presentation this afternoon. I'm going to call on Tanya Wilson. Ms. Wilson is the Director of our Planning, Environmental, and Developmental Services Department for a well-deserved and special presentation. Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, and good afternoon to Mayor Demmings, to our Commissioners, and to our County Administrator. Before Commissioner Scott had mentioned that it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and there's a lot of awareness and celebrations happening in October because it's also National and Community Planning Awareness Month. So it is my distinct honor and privilege to represent the planning and environmental development service department in recognizing our outstanding planning manager, Mr. Alberta Vargas, as this year's recipient of the prestigious Nolan Award. The Nolan Award is endowed by the Center of New Urbanism to individuals who've made significant local contributions to the advancement of new urbanist principles that are transferable to other communities across the state. And during Alberto's thirteen-year tenure here with Orange County, he's been involved in many notable projects and initiatives. The award highlights his vision in skillfully leading the planning team over the last eight years, development of Vision Twenty-Fifty and Orange Code. The principles contained in these planning initiatives are recognized by the Congress of New Urbanism as among the most impactful advancements of new urbanist principles in the state of Florida. While the recognition celebrates Alberto's past accomplishments, it's also an opportunity to look forward to identifying new and innovative ways to meet the interesting, the intersecting, and sometimes competing, social, economic, and environmental interests of our community. I would use this opportunity also to recognize that it's a testament of the visionary leadership of our mayor and commissioners, and the dedication of our planning and zoning staff, and the collaboration of our committed residents, whose input helped to craft the forward-looking policies and development standards in our codes. So here with me today is a battalion of both planning and zoning teams, EPD and Housing as well, standing together as a testament of the support that we have for Alberto and how we are celebrating this outstanding achievement, not just here in the state of Florida, but nationally across the country. That award is highly recognized. So with me today, I have Mr. Billy Hathaway. He's the current Chair of the Congress of New Urbanism for Florida Board. He's also the Senior Advisor at England Thims &amp; Miller, a civil engineering firm that's headquartered here in Jacksonville, Florida. Billy's also a past recipient of the John Nolan Award, and he will be bestowing the medal on Mr. Alberto Vargas today. So join me in celebrating Alberto Vargas, and Billy Hathaway will be stepping forward to bestow that medal. Billy?
Good morning. I am Billy Hathaway, and I am the Chair for the Congress, which is an organization that's been around for about fifty years, advocating for smart growth in walkable communities and making places that people want to live, work, and play. And so I feel I'm grateful to Mayor Demmings and also to council to give us the opportunity because this is a major award from the Florida chapter of the Congress for the New Urbanism. We have over three hundred members, and the selection is made by former members or former selectees of the award, so it is a very prestigious award. And I think Tanya has really laid out all of this beautifully. So this is, the achievement stands as one of the most significant adoptions of new urbanism in Florida and will benefit Orange County for generations. So with that...
One, two. Got two things here, Mayor. I'm going to hold this and ask you to put the medal on.
As we are prepared to recognize Alberto, Alberto has done yeoman's work for our county as a professional planner, and receiving this award is, I think, one of the highlights of his career. Alberto was very instrumental in doing, writing and drafting Vision Twenty-Fifty for Orange County. We're going to implement that before it's all over. By the way, Alberto, we're going to work with the state of Florida to make sure that that happens. So he has earned this highest recognition by his peers. And so Alberto, join me in the center here, as well as any of your other colleagues who may go to join us.
Before we move forward on our agenda, I'm going to do a couple of things. First, I do want to acknowledge some of the difficulties that some family and friends in Jamaica are experiencing today. Many of our employees here within Orange County are from Jamaica. They have families there. If you are an employee or anyone else who has a relative there, just kind of wave your hand at this time. I just want to see. Okay, so you can see we do have some who are here. So I believe that it would be appropriate for us to just take a pause and in your own very special way, lift up these families. Also, we have a youth group that's here. They're here in support of a grant that is going to be part of our meeting this afternoon. And so one of you youth, I'm going to put you on the spot. Which one of you is the leader of the group? Okay. The leader is over there. Okay. Come forward, come on forward and tell us about your organization. Yes, come right to that mic, if you don't mind. I like to recognize our youth who are doing good work and things in our community.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Cecily. I am part of the first robotics competition team named Four Oh Zero One Three Clockwork Mania. Today, we'll be here representing here, obviously, for our first organization. So first is a global nonprofit organization that essentially helps students like me from ages from like from K all the way to twelve to get involved in robotics and step very early on. I've been in this program since I was like five years old. So not only does this program allow us to, you know, build real-life skills and understand that it's very important to be able to work under pressure, but it also allows us to engage with peers from all over the world. On top of that, it supports us after, especially because I'm a senior. This year, I'll be eligible for over eighty million dollars in scholarships, and I'm really grateful for everything that this organization has been able to help me achieve. And I actually want to give a thank you to Ms. Wendy Austin. She's the Orlando Regional Director for this region, and she basically hosts this cool regional where we have like five-foot robots that are super big, and they're versed within an arena at the UCF Orlando Regional. You guys should definitely check it out.
All right. Well, thank you so much for being put on the spotlight, Matt. I think the future is, the future is bright for our, our community with young people like this. We hope to engage with you next year, in twenty twenty-six, hopefully in April. We will open at our multicultural center, our new innovations lab and center there, and we will perfectly hope that you will work with some of the youth who we will be exposing to the world of innovation, including robotics. So thank you for your presence here today. With that, we'll move forward on our agenda this afternoon. We'll move to the period of time for public comment. I'd like to invite members of the public to come forward who would like to address us regarding topics of interest or concern that are within this board's authority. However, there are certain matters which are not appropriate for public discussion during this public comment period. With the exception of the contract award for traffic infraction detectives, these matters include pending procurement or land use issues or concerns that should be properly brought to another board rather than this board. We will, of course, solicit public input during each public hearing scheduled for this afternoon. And with that, Mr. Thel Mueller, do we have any members of the public present who wish to be heard at this time?
We do. Mayor, we have eleven speakers for public comment this afternoon.
All right. For those eleven speakers, we're going to give you one minute by which to come forward and say what you have to say. We'll listen very carefully, so be efficient with your time. As you start, very quickly, give us your name and your address for the record if you choose to do so, and then we will start the clock. All right? Thank you. I know you can do it because we've seen countless people come in and get it done in sixty minutes. All right, sixty seconds. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, folks, I'm going to call your names in batches. When I do, please line up along the back wall, approach the podium in the order called. When you do, again, please begin with your name and reg, name and address for the record. First speaker is Zach Cole, followed by Richard Barbary, Carlos Loft, Val Mobley, and Octavian Cantili.
All right, please come forward.
You did say name and address, right?
Yes.
Excellent. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. My name is Zach Cole, resident of Winter Garden and a resident of Orange County in District One. I'd like to take a moment today to share how Career Source helped change my life for the better. In a previous life, thanks to my degree, I worked as a marine biologist working in offshore wind and oil projects while protecting federally protected marine life. My passion revolved around protecting the wildlife, but due to complications during the pandemic, my career path was no longer viable as an option. I moved between different odd jobs and wasn't sure on a direction to take until in twenty twenty-three, a family member connected me to Career Source to help me expand my skillset and open new career opportunities. From the beginning, their wonderful team took the time to understand my goals and helped me see new opportunities that I hadn't considered before. They provided me with support and connected me to project management training program at UCF, which I'm proud to say I completed in August of twenty twenty-three. Thanks to those skills, I transitioned into a new career as a mortgage loan originator. My passion now still revolves around helping, but my attention has turned towards helping my community members achieve the dream of American homeownership. I'm here to say thank you to Career Source and to your local leaders. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments, Mr. Cole. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor Demmings. My name is Richard Barbary. I live in Longwood, Florida, and I am the Director of Community Development for Addition Financial Credit Union. For those of you who don't know, Addition Financial is a credit union that was founded eighty-five years ago by O C P S teachers and still supports the community through financial education and collaborates with partners out in the community. And I'm here today specifically on behalf of Career Source to talk about how, together as a partner, we have been able to support our community, especially the youth, through some pretty amazing programs that they put on. One being the High School Career Express Program. Addition Financial Credit Union is very exciting. I love working for them, but we are one that, one, knows about the value of youth coming and working for us since we've been in the community for so long. But two, what I consider a hidden secret, Career Source runs this program through Disney University, all these major organizations. When they asked us to be a part of that and to have the students tour and learn about all the things a financial institution can offer them career-wise, these students were amazed. It gave them the opportunity to open their horizons and see what other amazing opportunities there is here in central Florida, specifically Orange County, for their own career growth. So I am extremely thankful for not only your support, but the support that Career Source provides our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barbary. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Thel Mobley, two-two-six West King Street, Orlando, three-two-eight-zero-four. Okay, support Orlando shelters. We're here, again, to encourage you to look at the Kaylee Avenue Work Release Center. I know that recently, the county facilities manager did a walkthrough to determine what needed to be repaired and what was okay. And from what I hear from that walkthrough, it is a doable thing. And the reason we're encouraging this is because this could be an up-and-running facility to help our homeless neighbors a lot faster than anything else y'all have on the table. But let me just add that whatever else you have on the table to house our unhoused population, we stand behind you. And if you want to call neighborhood meetings, we will be there to support wherever you want to place something, a facility, to house our unhoused neighbors. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mobley. We'll move to the next speaker, please.
Mayor, I apologize. I, I was preparing for three minutes, and now it's one minute, so I don't know if I should just, you know, come back another, another day or try to piece this together. I feel like maybe I should just come back in another day when I can just do one minute.
It's your choice.
Yeah, because otherwise, I don't know how, it won't make a lot of sense.
If, if there's something that you want to leave behind, that you want us to distribute amongst the members of the board, you can...
Sure.
Provide it to the clerk, and we'll be happy to do that.
You'd rather me do that? Okay, sure.
It's up to you.
Well, I can't condense this to one minute on the fly, and I, I want it to make sense to you guys, and so I don't want to waste any more of your time. But yeah, I can definitely disperse what I have and take it from there.
Before you go, before you go all the way here, I know what that's like. We all do. You took time. Just summarize and just let us know.
I mean, my mind doesn't really work that way, but, long story short, my name's Octavian Cantili. I'm the one who started the Stop Soda Shelter advocacy group. I'm pretty, I'm, I think that advocacy was based on fact, and everybody associated with that has the mentality of helping people. We just, like I said, I'm, I'm, my, my brain doesn't work that, this well. But yeah, I have a bunch of facts to support what I say, blah, 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 and then I have some, some things that I think would be very effective, both in terms of budget and transparency. Yeah. But yeah, like I said, this makes a lot more sense if I could have just read it, but like I said, I wasn't prepared for one minute.
You can, you can leave it with us.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, the next speaker, please.
All right, folks, next speaker is going to be Rachel Cobb, followed by Dr. Jim Moyer, Chris Carmody, Russell Drake, Christopher Stalder.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Rachel Cobb, and my address is fourteen-twenty East Robinson Street, Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight-zero-one. As we close National Pedestrian Safety Month, I'm here today to proudly represent Red Speed USA. We are an industry leader in photo enforcement, proudly serving nearly two hundred cities and counties across the nation for both red light and speed camera enforcement, including forty here in Florida. This afternoon, you'll be making an important decision... of budget and transparency. Yeah. But yeah, like I said, this makes a lot more sense if I could have just read it, but like I said, I wasn't prepared for one minute.
You can, you can leave it with us.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, the next speaker, please.
All right, folks, next speaker is going to be Rachel Cobb, followed by Dr. Jim Moyer, Chris Carmody, Russell Drake, Christopher Stalder.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Rachel Cobb, and my address is 1420 East Robinson Street, Orlando, Florida, 32801. As we close National Pedestrian Safety Month, I'm here today to proudly represent Red Speed USA. We are an industry leader in photo enforcement, proudly serving nearly two hundred cities and counties across the nation for both red light and speed camera enforcement, including forty here in Florida. This afternoon, you'll be making an important decision regarding the approval of the vendor for Orange County's red light program. I'm here to urge you to take a step back and consider canceling the current RFP process and issuing a new procurement. The current process, as you are aware, has been very challenging and complicated. And something we'd like to stress about our client is that our proposal offers significant savings for Orange County taxpayers, approximately ten million dollars compared to Vera Mobility and four million dollars in savings compared to Novoa Global. We encourage you to give the camp, as you've reissued the contract with your current venue for a year, you have ample time to, thank you so much.
I think we got the essence of what you were saying. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, everyone.
We'll move to the next speaker, please.
We grew up in the same town.
My name is Dr. Jim Moyer. I'm elected Orange Soil and Water Conservation District, Two Supervisor, and as you can see, I'm a Marine. We're about to turn two hundred and fifty years old. I live in Akoi. I'm here to convey a couple things. Bruce Lee once said, "If you love life, don't waste time, for time is what life is made up of." And, but people, human beings, plants, animals, were made up of water. Without water, there is no life. So, I'm here to urge the state and the county to clean up our water bodies. We have too much impaired water bodies. If we want a quality of life for now and in the future, we have to have quality water. Mother Nature, the scientists say, nature is going to send us a strong message in the next twenty-five to a hundred years, and we have to be prepared. I ended up unintentionally walking out into the eye of a hurricane. Believe me, nature is powerful. God bless you all.
Dr. Moyer, you looked pretty good for two hundred and fifty years. All right. Mr. Carmody.
Chris Carmody, 2804 Stanfield Avenue, Orlando, Florida. Here on behalf of Vera Mobility, one of the vendors in this bid protest that you'll be reviewing later today. First, I want to thank Ms. Carrie Mathis and the procurement team, and of course, your county attorney's office. I see Scott Chevanel's here and others. We've papered the file a bit on this one, as you probably noticed, and we think for good reason. I'll leave you with this, if you've already read the letters. It was unfair for the federal government to use its leverage over the grants that you receive to force you to suspend your MWBE program here at the county. It was also unfair that the county was put under the gun, so to speak, and forced to act so quickly so as to get it done by July first, so that you would still be able to qualify for some of the other grants that were important to you, but not with enough time to put an SBE program in in its place. And it was also unfair to take away those MWBE scores on this RFP. The first two instances you had no control over. The latter, you do. You can do the right thing here. You can cancel this RFP and allow all vendors, including ours, the one Rachel spoke out and others, to bid on a new contract. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carmody. Next speaker, please.
Russell Drake, address 4434 Bradley Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 32839. CEO and founder of Bill Black Daily LLC. I stand with Vieira Mobility and the request to cancel the RFP that had been issued for the red light cameras in Orange County. I'm an empowerment agent, work with the empowerment agency in support of minority and local businesses. And with the scores calculated, Vieira Mobility initially came out with a top score, and then some points were discarded by no fault of the committee in itself that reviewed these things. However, I mean, I'm an athlete guy and ask, at the end of the day, when the score is calculated, who changes the score or throws things out at the end? And I say, nobody. It doesn't happen in golf. It doesn't, that'd be like in football, discarding every field goal that was kicked. When the score changes, it needs to be a new game. So, we asked that, I asked and joined with them, as well as other groups, in asking that the RFP be discarded and a new one be put out. Thank you for your time and your leadership.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Drake. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Demmings, County Commissioners, neighbors. I'm here in support of Orlando shelters. We are all dependent on the generosity of others, our families, our neighbors, our friends, our acquaintances, and good Samaritans that all help enhance our quality of life and help us in times of need. Any of us could become housing insecure through one accident, one health crisis, an act of God, like a hurricane. And please consider helping more of our homeless. It's a great opportunity with all the services we offer near downtown Orlando to help improve giving people a safe place to rest their head and feel comfortable at night. And I would thank you for your consideration to help those in needs. It could be any of us out there. Thank you.
And you may have said it, but I might have missed it.
Oh, my name again, Christopher Stalder, 5102 St. Germain Avenue, Belle Isle, Florida. Thank you for reminding me. You did that last time. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move to the next speaker, please.
Two more speakers, Adi Bush and Margie Vieira.
Good morning, Andrew Domingos. I'm here on behalf of Novoa Global with respect to the request for proposal Y241099. I'm sure the commission is already very familiar with this. We've, oh, there's already been several letters that have been submitted in correspondence going back and forth, but just to reiterate some of the main points, we're a local company. We're Orlando-based. If we were fortunate to be selected and we were ranked number one, and if we were fortunate to receive this contract, it would be a great economic opportunity for, for this, for Orlando and for Orange County. So, we would respectfully ask that you deny the protest. It would also, we're about six million dollars less expensive than the second-ranked bidder, so we think that that should factor into your consideration as well. Thank you for your time.
And you did say you were with Novoa Global?
Novoa Global, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. Nick, did he have a card?
We do not. If you could just fill out a card.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was I supposed to?
Yes, you have to sign in.
Okay, I apologize.
If you just get a, get a information to the, for the, follow.
Okay, we'll move to the next speaker.
Adi Basu, I live down the street, eight-two-zero Main Lane. I'm here speaking for my friends at a small but mighty organization, Support Orlando Shelters. I heard from a couple. I would say, I actually live in construction of a shelter at Kaylee Street, and then, of course, it got canceled. So, a lot of my friends don't have the ear of people in power at the county or at the municipalities, but I can say a lot of my friends have had times where they're down on their luck and they have to live in their cars or whatever. And I think as a community, you know, you know, on the precipice of Family Week, it's important to be able to support people at their worst so they can grow to be at their best. Most homeless people aren't criminals. Most criminals aren't homeless. And of course, there needs to be like some rationale, some protections and all that. I'm all for that. Maybe support some other projects, too, but yeah. There you go.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Basu. Are there any other speakers?
Mayor, I believe that was our last speaker.
Okay. Thank you all for your comments, and we're going to move forward now on our agenda, and we're going to move to the consent agenda. We're going to ask the county administrator, Mr. Byron Brooks, if he will present the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. We have no changes to the consent agenda, so staff requests board action as submitted.
So, moved Yuribe?
Second, Scott.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Yuribe for approval, second by Commissioner Gomez-Cudero. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes, and it is unanimous. All right, with the action that we just took regarding the consent agenda, I do want to highlight a few of the things that was on the consent agenda. First, through our Citizen Safety Task Force funding, our Citizens Commission for Children Division is entering into a series of three-year partnerships focusing on youth violence prevention countywide, and these are nonprofit organizations that we will be engaging with, collaborating with. Seven of our region's most ardent nonprofit service providers. These strategic investments will focus on youth mentorship services, life skills training, and socio-emotional and health resources, just to name a few. The goal is to provide brighter futures for at-risk youth. Together, the seven contracts total about one and a half million dollars. The division estimates these seven partnerships would directly benefit more than five hundred youth annually. Also, the Orange County awarded a $2.9 million contract for the construction of several projects within the Horizon West Regional Park. The work will include a splash pad, additional asphalt and grass parking, a floating dock on Lake Hartley, and an open lawn and gathering area for events with a new walkway. We also approved the resolution allowing the county to establish a fiscal sustainability tool, which was mandated by seventy-three percent of the voters in November of 2024 here on the Orange County ballot as part of the Orange County Charter Amendment. This approval establishes a methodology and process to evaluate the financial impacts of proposed urban service area expansions and comprehensive plan amendments or rezoning applications within rural settlements or the rural service area. Implementation of this evaluation process will begin in January of 2026 for rezoning applications and in May of 2026 for comprehensive plan amendments. We also approved the fiscal year 2025-2026 bus service agreement with LINKS for the Accelerated Transportation Safety Program. Under this agreement, LINKS will extend five existing routes and increase service frequency on one route to the New Pine Hills Transfer Center. The ATSP is a five-year, $100 million initiative jointly implemented by Orange County and LINKS to address critical transportation needs. In addition to service improvements, the program has funded the installation of new bus shelters throughout Orange County. By the end of this year, LINKS expects to install one hundred and six additional shelters, bringing the total to two hundred and sixty-four new bus shelters countywide. This is so that those who depend on the LINKS' public transit system to have a place where they can rest and also have protection from the elements. And this, again, will be countywide. Lastly, I would like to recognize and congratulate Ms. Brandy Drigus. Brandy, would you stand, please? She has now been officially appointed as manager of our Neighborhood Services Division, a promotion from within Orange County. Brandy has been with Orange County for several decades at this point. Thank you for your continued service. Anyway, all right. So, with that, we're going to move forward, and I'm going to now call on Ms. Lakin O'Hara, our chief planner from the zoning division. She's going to come forward to present the October the second, 2025 Board of Zoning Adjustment Recommendations.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. On October second, 2025, the Board of Zoning Adjustment heard eleven cases. Seven cases were recommended for approval. One case was recommended for denial. Two cases were continued to the December fourth public hearing, and one case was continued to a future public hearing. The BZI appeal deadline was on Friday, October seventeenth, and one appeal was submitted for case VA 2509039, Beresford Gittens. The zoning division will be requesting that this case be scheduled for a separate public hearing. So, with the exception of case VA 2509039, which was appealed, and cases VA 2510046, VA 2510047, and SE 2511051, which were continued, we request that the BCC accept the BZI-recommended action and findings.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lakin. If there are no items be pulled by members of the board, I will entertain a motion.
So, moved Yuribe?
Motion by Commissioner Yuribe.
Scott.
Second by Commissioner Scott. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes, and it is unanimous. Thank you. We'll move to the next item on this afternoon's agenda. A1, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Mr. Tim Hall, our Environmental Programs Administrator, will come forward to frame this item. With that, Mr. Hall, you're recognized.
Thank you and good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Today, I'm presenting a shoreline alteration dredge and fill permit request for the applicant MoMA Lake Corporation for replacement vinyl seawall along the shoreline of Big Sand Lake. This permit application number is S A D F 2506017. Here's a location map. The property is shown in red here on the western shoreline of Big Sand Lake at 8100 Lake Serene Drive. And here is an aerial photo of the subject property outlined in yellow. Here are photos of the applicant's existing seawall, and as you can see, it is in disrepair and in need of replacement. The existing concrete wall extends along approximately a hundred feet of the subject shoreline. E P D was unable to find a permit on file for that wall. However, aerial photos indicate it may have been built during construction of the original home sometime between 1998 and 2000 by a previous property owner. Therefore, E P D is not pursuing enforcement action for the existing wall. That wall is located landward of a platted conservation buffer easement, which is shown in green on this exhibit, and that's dedicated to both Orange County and the South Florida Water Management District. The applicant's proposing approximately 129 feet of new vinyl seawall, which is shown here as a red line, and that'll be located landward of both the conservation buffer easement and the normal high water elevation of Big Sand Lake. The wall will have a seven-foot return along the western parcel boundary and approximately 77-foot return on the eastern parcel boundary. The adjacent property to the east has a seawall, and there are also other seawalls along Big Sand Lake. Here's a cross-section of the proposed wall. Based on prior board direction, native plantings and riprap are normally required for new and replacement seawalls. However, there is abundant shoreline vegetation on this property, so no additional plantings are being required. Riprap, however, will be installed and is depicted on the proposed plans. The new seawall will be positioned such that the placement of the riprap will be landward of the conservation buffer easement. Some considerations for this project, it was reviewed in accordance with Chapter 15, Article Six, and the review criteria and conditions of issuance therein. We notify the public of this hearing within 500 feet of the project site, and we receive no objections. Our finding is pursuant to Orange County Code, Chapter 15, Article Six. E P D has evaluated the proposed S A D F permit application and required documents, and has made a finding that the request is consistent with Section 15218. And finally, action requested is acceptance of the findings and recommendation of the E P D staff and approval of shoreline alteration dredge and fill permit S A D F 2506017 for MoMA Lake Corp. Incorporated, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. This is in District One, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is the applicant on this item present or representative? If so, I invite you to come forward.
Mayor, the applicant's agent did plan to be here, but they are recovering from a broken shoulder and was unable to be here.
Okay. And they had no objection to us moving forward?
No.
Okay. All right, then we'll open it up for members of the public. Do we have anyone present from the public who wishes to be heard?
We have no speakers for this item, Mayor.
All right. Then we'll close the public hearing. We'll go to the district commissioner. Commissioner Wilson, do you have a potential motion?
Yes, I'd like to be the requested action.
Second, Scott.
All right. Commissioner Wilson made the motion for approval. The second is going to be Commissioner Moore. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes, and it is unanimous. With that, then we'll move to the next item. We're going to call Ms. Carrie Mathis, the manager of our procurement division, to come forward for our discussion agenda. And the first item is the selection of a firm and three-ranked alternatives, alternatives to provide all of this to Integrated Water Resources Project. three-ranked alternatives to provide Orla Vista Integrated Water Resources project services. So with that, you're recognized, Ms. Mathis.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This procurement committee item has evaluated proposals for Orla Vista Integrated Water Resource Project. I am requesting board selection of one firm and three-ranked alternates, as well as the requested action on the screen. Commissioner Moore was assigned to this procurement committee.
Would you like a motion, Mayor?
Commissioner Moore, you got it.
I move for the selection of Tetra Tech, Inc. at 350 points, with Black &amp; Beach Corporation at 303.33 points, and Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. at 290, and Chalk Consulting at 280 points as the ranked alternates, as well as the requested action on the screen.
Second, Gomez.
All right. We have a second with Commissioner Gomez-Cudero. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes, and it is unanimous. All right. Thank you, Ms. Mathis. You're up for the next item, A2. We'll listen to you on this presentation as you frame the item regarding design services for Destination Parkway to Central Florida Parkway and reference to reclaimed water main installation and forced main replacement.
Thank you. The procurement committee has evaluated proposals for design services for Destination Parkway to Central Florida Parkway reclaimed water main installation and forced main replacement. I am requesting board selection of one firm and four ranked alternates, as well as the requested action on the screen. Commissioner Moore was assigned to this procurement committee.
All right. Are there any questions by members of the board? If not, Commissioner Moore, do you have a potential motion?
I do. I move for the selection of Burgess and Nipple, Inc. at 386 points, with Hazen and Sawyer 363 points, Tetra Tech, Inc. at 359 points, Chalk Consulting at 348.33 points, and Ardua Group at 327 points as the ranked alternates, as well as the recommended action on the screen.
Second, Uribe.
All right. We have a second by Commissioner Uribe. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes, and it is unanimous. All right. We'll move to the next item, which is A3, and Ms. Mathis will be framing this item as well regarding continuing professional engineering design services. With that, you're recognized.
Thank you. The procurement committee has evaluated proposals for continuing professional engineering design services. I am requesting board selection of five firms and five ranked alternates, as well as the requested action on the screen. Commissioner Scott was assigned to the procurement committee.
All right. With that, any questions by members of the board? If not, Commissioner Scott, do you have a potential motion?
I do. Mayor, move for the selection of the five firms and the five-ranked alternates as followed. AFCON with 391 points, Pegasus Engineering LLC with 355 points, TLIP Engineering Consultants with 343 points, Florida Engineering Group with 340 points, Johnson and Meram and Thompson Incorporated with 328.33 points, with Baxter and Woodman Incorporated 370 points, or 307 points, Burgess and Nipple Incorporated with 297.33 points, DRMP Incorporated with 295.33 points, Vanis Hagen Versland Incorporated with 285.33 points, Propel Engineering LLC with 268.67 points as the ranked alternates, as well as the requested action on the screen.
Second, Uribe. I'm sorry, second, Uribe.
All right. Commissioner Scott is the motioner. The second is Commissioner Uribe. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes, and it is unanimous. All right. With that, then we'll move to the next item on the agenda. And again, Ms. Mathis, you are star pupil this afternoon. We're asking her to present regarding the selection of a firm related, and three alternates, related to the intersection automated enforcement safety system. We heard several members of the public speak earlier this afternoon about this particular item. And with that, I'm going to call on you to frame the item, Ms. Mathis.
Thank you, Mayor. The procurement committee has evaluated proposals for intersection automated enforcement safety system, and requesting board selection of one firm and three ranked alternates, as well as the requested action on the screen. Commissioner Uribe was assigned to the procurement committee.
All right. With that, we heard several persons, I think, address this particular item, and they were requesting to pull this item or cancel the contract. Would, who's the most appropriate person to talk about the process that got us to this point and why there's not a recommendation to cancel?
I can start speaking, and Scott Chevanelles here from the county attorney's office, if you'd like some guidance from him from a legal perspective. But essentially, we issued the solicitation in November of last year, fully including all of the typical RFP requirements that an evaluation criteria would comprise of for this particular procurement. At the time, that did include the county's MWBE program with a weighted score, as is typical in our procurement items. The scoring took place in the spring, and in July 1 of this year, the board made the decision to suspend the county's MWBE program in accordance with the federal executive orders that were brought down from the federal level. And at that time, we did confer with the county attorney's office to understand what our options might be with regards to not just this procurement, but we also had another procurement that had already been scored with MWBE criteria in it before the board took their action on July 1. And so in both instances, the guidance that we received from legal was that we were within our rights to reconvene the procurement committee to remove the MWBE criteria and the respective scoring from all of the proposers. And so under that guidance, we reconvened not just this procurement committee, but the previous one as well, which was for cost estimating and project management services for the convention center, which the board took up as an item on October 14 of this year and ultimately awarded. But during the time, as a result of the July 1 action that the board took, we already had 110 procurements that had opened, which had an MWBE consideration in them for which we had to adjust for. And so as is typical when legislative changes at the state, you know, level, we rely on legal's guidance to say what is it we're within our legal bounds to do. And in this particular case, as a result of the board's action, we were advised that we were within our legal rights to reconvene and remove that criteria and respective scoring from all of the proposers. It didn't create an unfair advantage for any of the proposers because we treated them all equal and on the same footing, removing the scoring from all of them. And as a result of that action being taken, it did change the ranking of the proposers and position Novo Global as the top-ranked firm. Previous to that, it was Vera Mobility that was in the top-ranked firm. As a result of the MWBE criteria being moved, that ranking did change.
All right. We'll hear from the county attorney's office.
Mayor, Commissioners, and that's true what she just said. The question to me was, is this an equal playing field for everybody? And so, public agencies afford a wide discretion as long as there's no fraud or illegality. As you can imagine, this was a very novel and unique situation. There were no cases on point. I searched for case law. There's nothing that really would follow this fact pattern. So we looked at it, and again, the decision was made that it was equal across the board. We treated everybody equally. There was no favoritism, and moved forward because of that.
All right. I'll open it up to members of the board for any questions. We'll start with Commissioner Wilson, followed by Commissioner Uribe, followed by Commissioner Moore, and then Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Wilson, you're recognized.
Thank you so much. And I just want to thank you and your team procurement here in Orange County. Everybody should feel very confident about the transparency and diligence with which your department operates. And I just want to start right there. The second thing I want to cover that I know our board knows and the staff here knows, but I want to make sure the public knows, which is that we were largely threatened to, you know, be required to pull back on our WMBE program, which quite frankly felt like it was punitive and continues to feel that way, right? So this is just another piece of that punishment trickling down from a federal mandate that makes no sense when we know that it was being operationally useful for some of our smaller businesses. That being said, hearing that Orange County was within its rights to remove the scores that were already placed, put in place during the process, is that the same as being required to or being essentially, you know, in harm's way or running afoul of state or federal law? Just trying to decide, was this a discretionary move, or was it a requirement to remove those scores?
Well, it was required. I mean, we have hundreds of millions of dollars in federal grant money, and to fail you to do that, we had to certify, as a matter of fact, about that timeframe. We had to certify that we didn't have any DEI programs. And if the federal government had come in and found that we did, and I would tell you that the MWBE program would have met the requirements as a DEI program, we were potentially on the hook not only to lose that grant money, but trouble damages, which is triple the amount.
And understanding sort of the consequences and understanding the gravity of the situation, the timing then sort of becomes my question. And we adopted here the repeal of that program on July, I think you said the day.
July 1.
And what day was this particular item scored?
I can answer that for you. This particular item was reconvened on May 22, originally to resolve a correction in some scoring that had taken place previously where there was an error in the MWBE scoring. But once the board actually took their action on July 1, we did reconvene on July 17.
Okay. I think the hard thing for me in this one, and I can't imagine what you all are trying to do as far as trying to, you know, make sure everything is done precisely, but it feels a little bit like hitting the rewind button. And I know we're already feeling like historically, we're hitting the rewind button. But in the process itself, because that was at a distinct period in time, the score was in. And that's my only concern. I'm going to obviously listen to what the other, my colleagues have as far as questions, but I just want to express that to you, that that's my place here. And I support you all, and I know that this is something that we will have to figure out, you know, in moving forward. But I think that time of the day we adopted the repeal versus the time those scores came in is where I'm a little bit stuck.
So interesting question that Commissioner Wilson is asking, and essentially, what I'm hearing is, is it relevant, the time period in which the board, before we actually executed contracts with any of the vendors, is it relevant that the time in which, you know, it was bid it, it was opened, it was scored, and then reconvened, is it relevant to this conversation about the timing issues that she's, you know, outlining?
What I can share with you, Mayor, is with regards to the timeline, we did receive a protest. And so anytime we receive a protest, we have to act in accordance with the procurement ordinance in terms of holding a hearing. We did receive a protest as a result of the May 22 meeting. We held a hearing on June 11 to resolve that protest, and then it allowed for an appeal process to happen. But the timing of being able to bring an agenda item forward for July 1 had already passed at that point. The requirement for us to start an agenda process to get something to the board on July 1 would have had to have started June 5, which was before we could even bring this to a hearing. So despite best efforts, it is unfortunate. There are times that we simply are subject to everybody's availability and scheduling. We do try to bring these things as timely as possible, but there are also timeframes which we have to abide by agenda development and bringing things. So we just didn't have a possibility in this case to be able to bring it any quicker than we did.
Okay. So there were some extraordinary circumstances here. It's not quite just as simple as, you know, when we opened the biz, when we potentially scored them, and when the decision was made to suspend our program, and we end up to the relative position where we are today, where, you know, we're moving forward. So, okay. You answered my questions. Commissioner Moore?
Carrie, so to follow behind the mayor then, so if everything were perfect, we could have had a date, then we would have had a different order. If we could have actually gotten here ahead of July 1, the order would have been different.
That is correct.
And so what is the legal ruling if we decided that that was decided back then? And would we be a foul of the executive order if we decided that today?
Well, potentially, but I think we would have had more coverage. If you're asking if we'd entered into a contract before the July 1 date, I think we would have had more coverage and just say, hey, we've got a legally binding contract. So I think the timing did play a role in that situation.
So you're saying, so you feel like we have some exposure because the contract was not executed?
Anything after July 1, if we executed a contract after that, yes, I think there's additional exposure at that point in time.
And there's no way to go back and say whatever the order was at that time to make a ruling on that and say it wasn't based on MWBE?
I'm not sure I follow your commission.
Could we make a ruling based on that date that didn't include MWBE?
You could throw the whole thing out now if that's your choice. You could do that and start from scratch.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm just saying, back at that time, it was pretty decided, but we couldn't get in front of the board. Is there a way to say that there was a decision point then that would not run afoul of the federal government ignoring MWBE?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And so then, what would happen if we throw the contract out and we start all over? We're still going to be evaluating the same criteria. We just won't be using MWBE. So this question for Carrie is, if we started all over, what has the potential to change?
So I spoke to Public Works to ask, in the event that the board chose to cancel this, would there be any changes in terms of their scope? And they indicated that there would be some volume changes to it in terms of the number of cameras potentially that could be installed throughout Orange County. This particular solicitation, I believe, contemplated up to 120 cameras, and they may contemplate changing that value and increasing it. The contract that we currently have now is at 80 cameras, and so if we are to remain with that particular contract, which we're in, we're in contract through next August, just so you're aware. We have continuity of service through next August, but we are limited to 80 cameras. And so if you consider canceling and not moving forward, it would just mean that this program would not necessarily be able to be expanded until such time as we went through a resolicitation.
And of course, we haven't really talked about this, but this is about cameras at crosswalks near schools. And so I don't know if that's a question, is this the regular red light cameras?
This is the red light intersection cameras, not the school.
Oh, okay. All right. So there's no impact on that program?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Carrie, Scott, thank you guys for your work on this. With this, I guess, before I come to you, it would be with George and or Byron. In our briefing, you said that they would be allowed to provide public comment. Was that satisfied with this morning, or was there going to be a separate period?
That was satisfied. We were saying that during that public comment period, that unlike other procurement matters, they were allowed to speak during public comment, which they did today.
Copy. All right. Thank you. Carrie, Scott, this RFP, was it going to be seven? Or the contract was going to be for seven years or 10 years?
10 years.
It's going to be 10 years. And this will be the first time that we're doing a 10-year agreement, correct?
No, our current contract that we have was contemplated to be 10 years. We had solicited this RFP previous to this, which ultimately ended up being canceled, so we had to extend for a year. And as a result of this protest process, we've also entered into a one-year extension. So they're actually in at least their 12th year of contract.
Okay. You both may have an answer for this. What would be the challenges if we decided we wanted to start from scratch, from a fiscal or operational standpoint and timeline?
So we're under contract currently through next August, so we have all of those mechanisms in place to make sure that we have continuity of operations for the current system. The limitation would be that you're limited to the number of cameras under that contract as opposed to this contract, which would allow it to be increased. But we have the funding mechanisms in place. It would just be a matter of going through the process of a resolicitation.
So the loss would, in essence, be staff time. Staff would have to go through the process again, which was six or seven months altogether?
Roughly six months.
Six months, including the protest, right?
Correct.
Okay. But that is the only challenge?
So we actually issued this last November, so we're close to 11 months with this process. But yes, it would just essentially be staff time.
How long was the RFP advertised?
The RFP, normally, we put them out on the street for 30 days.
And so is there any prohibition in either the admin reg or your department or divisional policies that would preclude and abbreviated RFP, let's say, a week or two? I mean, obviously, everyone has, here has participated in this process, and there may be a few that may want to jump in the be a few that may want to jump in the pool, so to speak. But like if this board decided that we wanted to start all over from scratch, right, with the new RFP, could we or you reduce the time or the advertising time for RFP? Does it have to be 30 days?
It's typically 30 days for the reason that we allow people to seek clarifications if they feel like anything is perhaps ambiguous, or they want some additional context to something in the RFP. We do allow them several weeks to bring forward their questions in writing. We circulate those to the requesting department and provide those answers by way of an addendum that is published so that everybody that might be interested has access to that information. So we regularly get questions on RFPs. We got questions on this particular RFP as well, so I would be hesitant to try to reduce an RFP process down because it would then preclude that opportunity for people to ask clarifying questions. And this is the second go-around for this RFP, we got questions both times. So even though we try to infuse as much clarity from a previous solicitation, it is typical that we get questions that we need to provide clarification to in writing to interested parties.
Okay, final question. So again, along the lines of us reissuing this, if it were to happen realistically, would we be back here in another three months, four months, six months?
I would say six months.
Six months?
This particular procurement type, despite best efforts, is just one that typically does get protest. I've heard that from my peers, I've experienced it before, so like the likelihood that this is protested again, it's a possibility. And so normally, I err on the side of caution when we're talking about timelines for procurements. When there is a likelihood that a protest could occur, that's typically close to six months.
And just one quick follow-up, and this may be on-the-spot question, so I apologize if you're not prepared to answer, and it's okay. So if you reissue this RFP, would the only change be the removal of the MWE? Or would you possibly make some additional adjustments based on things you've learned in this process?
What we always do if we're going to resolicit something is, we would take a look at all of the questions that were clarified in the prior process, and we would infuse all of those clarifications into the new RFP. Because if we don't do that, we likely will get the same questions. So we always go back and look and address all the addendums that were issued for the previous, put all that information in. We would update based on those numerical values that Public Works would provide us. Depending on the status of the county's SBE program, that may or may not be included. That remains to be seen. But other than that, they indicated they had no scope changes other than number of cameras.
Carrie, Scott, thank you for the answers to the questions, I appreciate you, Mayor, I'm good.
All right, Commissioner Gomez-Cudero?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Carrie and Council Scott, for all the help and all the question answered at the briefing, but I still have three more questions. They're easy, I think. Okay, so number one, were there any other project agenda or scoring going through during the time that we had to make the decision in July 1st?
Oh, yes, we had one other RFP that had already been scored. And that was the cost estimating and project management procurement for which the board took action to award on October 14th of this year. So we only had two that had already been through full scoring. When we were aware that the board was going to take up consideration of suspending the program on July 1st, we actually did have a procurement committee scheduled the week previous that we rescheduled to push out to a later date after the board's decision so we could understand what that decision was, and we could make sure that it wasn't being kind of subject to this type of situation either. So we just pushed it out and rescheduled it after a July 1st date.
Okay, so that's my second question. If we go, well, if we go through the process again, if we decide, the board decide to, and you have to do the resolicitation again, will other agencies or organizations or companies be able to apply as well?
Sure, we posted out on our e-procurement platform, and so it notifies any subscribed vendors that have identified the particular commodity code matching their business opportunities. So it is broadly broadcast out through that system to any interested parties that want to compete for it, yes.
Okay, and this is my last question, just to understand a little bit more. In order for procurement to stop, right, the process, the scoring process, they have to come to the BCC or they can do it on their own?
So the procurement ordinance allows the protest committee to consider canceling a solicitation only under two parameters. If they feel like there has been a violation of law or internal regulations to the county. And during the protest hearing to consider this particular protest, the county attorney's office had advised the protest committee that there had been no violation of law or any internal regulations.
Okay, so thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Semirat?
Thank you, Mayor. So Carrie, I have, where I'm failing to understand is, so there was, what was X amount of contracts that were in this cycle, 110, you said? So all 110 of these fell victim to what has been the greatest theme across this board since I've been here with state overreach and telling us what we can and can't do. Oh, this is federal. This is Trump's, oh, better. So the point is, is that it's constant preemption, and nobody up here wanted to eliminate that program. You know, we were, everybody was concerned about it, felt bad about it, but we didn't get an opportunity to do anything. So if 110 contracts are impacted that way, and I can tell you that I also, and I'm super empathetic, actually, to the incumbent, because I had programs that were just canceled on me as well by the federal government through educational grants. So that was super disappointing, or we were in the process of applying and preparing a packet, which takes a ton of time, and it was just canceled, it was dropped because of this. So I'm super empathetic to the position. But what I'm not understanding is that if all 110 contracts removed what the point value was on the matrix for, what was the point value for MWE? What was that on the matrix?
Yeah, so we had 120, we had 110 procurements that had opened, they weren't all RFPs. Some of them were invitation for bids. And for any that, any RFPs that had opened but had not yet been scored, at the top of those meetings, we made a statement that based on the board's decision July 1st, that the MWE criteria would not be scored as part of that procurement. It's just that these two already had been through scoring. So any RFPs that had been out on the street prior to July 1st that had the MWE scoring in it, or the criteria in it that had already closed, we didn't have the ability to go back and do an addendum to remove it. Any that were still out on the street as of July 1st, we did. We issued an addendum to all of those to remove that criteria because we still had the ability to do it. But once a public opening of those procurements happens, there can be no more modifications by way of an addendum. So those, we just had to adjust at the top of the procurement committee to advise that the MWE criteria would not be considered.
Okay, so then I have two questions. So then, when you segment, because you're using a whole cycle, right, of submissions, and that cycle equated to 110, and a portion, what I'm trying to understand is, did a portion of that cycle get to, they got notice that the MWE was gone, and another portion of the same cycle didn't have knowledge of that, so they had prepared an application with consideration of those points? Is that what happened?
So in IFB, in invitation for bids, there are no points, it's just low response of responsible bidder. In RFPs, there are points. So yes, to your question, any that had already opened, there was no ability to us to go in and actually remove it from the solicitation because it had already closed. But for the ones that were still open and out on the street, we did remove it, and they were noticed. But once it opens, we don't have the ability to go in and make any more modifications to the solicitation, be it an RFP or an IFB.
And that process is a legal process, where you say, we don't go in and amend, like where they were in the cycle, something happens, you notify, and you retract out and start over. That's a legal process that we've adopted? There's policy for that we don't make amendments while in the process?
Well, there's no legal precedent for this issue, so we don't speak to it one way or the other. That's why this was a novel issue for us, and we had to deal with it one way or the other, so.
Okay, and then, where I'm also, I have a gap of information, is what would change? Because no new points for any applicant were added, where it was like, hey, you didn't, you know, we removed this section, so we've added this criteria. So no new points were added. So where I'm failing to understand is, with the removal where it's a constant X, removal of value, then it happens to everybody. So I'm failing to understand how if we reissued and went through the process again, that if no new criteria has been added, how could the points fluctuate unless there's an inconsistency in an evaluation process?
So in the, I'll give you the example of this MWE issue that took place. Some firms had achieved 50 points for MWE, where some had achieved 25 points for MWE, and some had achieved zero points for MWE. So it's not a constant that they all get equally applied scores, it's based on the information that's submitted in their proposal. If you're asking about if we resolicited, would, how would we, how could it possibly be that their scores would be different? It really depends on the amount of information and the substance of what they put in their proposal response, and it would be evaluated against the criteria in the RFP. So even if a firm scored 60 points for a criteria in this instance, if we resolicited it and they submitted different information that might be more robust or had greater content to it, they might achieve a higher score than 60 on that same criteria.
But I would make the assumption that a submission, when you're going after $32 million, would be, as best you could be in every single section, not just one specific category. So why would we think content would change? I mean, that's a huge, that's a big contract, 32 million for a company. So if I, when I bid my contracts, I make sure that I'm going after, that all my sections have the best quality that I can do.
Yeah, I mean, it would be speculative in nature, but I would agree with you that each firm should put their best foot forward in all of the criteria. Factors change throughout the market, who they might team up with, their fee proposal, they might take a look at it, and that might give them a different point value, scoring value for even fee proposal. But I do agree with you that firms should be putting their best foot forward in all criteria instead of just focusing on certain ones.
So now, coming to the, you know, the final question, there's no legal precedence, so then what's the legal, the right thing to do?
Well, so, I mean, that's the million-dollar question, right? So this has never been litigated, this particular issue. So again, I look at the law, and the law says, you know, unless there's some kind of fraud or illegality, public agencies are given wide discretion, and ultimately, you're trying to keep a level playing field for everybody. So across the board, we remove the MWB for everybody across the board, and that was the most level way we could do it or approach it, is what we decided.
So let me jump in real quick, because I think perhaps, kind of where Commissioner Semirat is going, this all occurred as a result of a presidential executive order. Is that order currently being litigated, where there's pending litigation against whether the president had the authority to issue the executive order?
Mayor, I'm not sure of the answer to that. I know some of his executive orders are being challenged, that particular one, I don't know. Heather Wallace in my office is more the expert in that particular order, but I don't know the answer to that. I believe it may be.
I'm looking to the attorneys, because if the executive order is being litigated, that means it's in the courts, and the courts could make some decision that could be consistent with where we are now, or the courts could make a decision that's inconsistent with where we are. And so that's why I asked the question. And if it's not being litigated, then we certainly move forward, because if it's being litigated, before we get the opportunity to execute the contract, that could have some bearing on whether we could even execute the contract if it gets resolved in the courts prior to that particular date that we execute the contract. So I don't know the answer to that, I'm asking you all.
Mayor, what I would say with respect to that is that, Jeff Newton, county attorney, is that we're not aware of any litigation wherein that executive order has been successfully challenged or enjoined from being in effect. And so I think the prudent thing to do is to just act as if it is in effect, that it is valid, and that we abided by it, and that this procurement was evaluated based upon it being in effect.
So, okay, so in other words, the executive order as we know it today is the law. And we have complied with the law?
Correct.
By the action that we have taken at this point?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's, I thought was the essence of what Commissioner Semirat was trying to get to. All right, Commissioner Uribe?
So I did meet with a few of the folks, obviously, yesterday, and there are a couple of points of clarification, if you could indulge me. When the NWE enterprise was included in the assessment of the RFP, was the outcome the same as it currently is now?
When the MWE scoring took place during the procurement, and we did have to go back and correct a score in a public meeting because we realized there was an error in the calculation, we advised all the proposers and said, please, come back, we're holding a public meeting, and we need to correct the scoring. At the conclusion of that scoring meeting, then Vera Mobility, who's our incumbent, was the top-ranked firm. When we reconvened after the board's decision to suspend the program, and we removed that criteria in all of the scoring entirety, it moved Novoa Global into the top-ranked position, and Vera Mobility became the ranked alternate.
Got it, and were these applicants given the opportunity to adjust their application? Because the rules...
There is no ability for them to adjust.
Okay, so the rules changed already when they submitted, and they weren't given any opportunity to adjust their applications because of that?
There's no ability for them to adjust once it's been open.
Okay, but I mean, I understand what you're saying. I mean, obviously, when we've done procurements in the past, these are the rules, people applying, that's what it's based on. But the problem is, the rules changed, not because of us, because of a law, a federal law, and those applications were expected to take the same value that they would have taken under a different set of rules. And I kind of find that uneasy, just kind of listening to my colleagues. It's not your fault, it's not our fault, but the rules changed midway, and when they did, they were not afforded an opportunity to even try to comply with what was going on.
That would restart the process.
I'm getting to my point, I know this, I'm trying to get to my point. I mean, I'm trying to show that that is something that's uneasy for me, because clearly, we, you know, somebody else got it, the rules changed, and someone else got it, but at the same time, no one was given the opportunity to adjust to the new game, to the new rules that were being presented. And that's, and I know that that's the fact, and this is where I'm having a little bit of cause with really accepting the results. I did meet with, I guess, three of the five that came to see me, I had a sunshine meeting, and I want to go a little bit different. I know that you also said, we currently, you currently had to extend the current application until August of 2026 because of the protests, and we've done this before. I vividly remember when we were going over the convention center, I mean, excuse me, corrections, food, you got, we adjusted it twice, we actually extended it twice. So at no point, if we were to reestablish this or reopen this up, would we be without any kind of service or without that due process happening for the red light camera?
That is correct, we're currently under contract through August of next year.
Okay, and so, and then I also wanted, I'm sorry, did you say something? Okay, okay. One of the major, one of the questions that I asked everyone, as I said, and even the current person who now became the number one, number two, and it's such a very slight numerical change, so clearly, there were some changes that took place. One of the things that kind of stood out to me also was the person who now moved into first, only, what place were they in prior to that? Were they number two or number three?
They were number two.
Okay, and it seems like some of the things that stood out to me were the amount of employees and things like that, and subcontractors, which is how essentially we ensure other people in this town get work from these. Because we know, and this has been something that I have been pushing along, is that when you get a prime that is so huge, how much local impact are they making? How many companies are they able to employ? How many people? And that's where I kind of was a little taken, because while we didn't change the rules, the rules were changed, but there were other applications that... the rules, the rules were changed, but there were other applications that would have given opportunities to smaller businesses to be a part of this contract, which even in our meeting yesterday said, we don't need smaller subcontractors because we can do it all. And that really left, and, and I know, I, you know, Byron, you know, I've really, really been trying to push the small business enterprise. We're not there, we haven't even had our workshop. But the reason why it gives me pause is, we've taken on that position to try to create an SBE, and an SBE will definitely change a different outcome, because we're now looking at providing more local small businesses the opportunity, all of these other things that we're trying to bring in to kind of compensate and create a program that has compliance and all of that. And I don't think we lose anything by redoing this. Yes, it becomes a hassle to you all, but what really leaves me really bothered on this is, there was never an opportunity for anyone to really apply under the new rules. So we have a set of new rules, because it's been deemed on us, but at the same time, all of these applicants applied based on old rules, and never were they given that opportunity. So I personally, and I'm just giving my thought, and I know it's my turn to read the procurement discussion, I would actually look to see, and do, that you're saying six months, you think it's around six months. If we do this six months, we're still way before the extension of that contract, because you're saying August of 2026. So let's just say we throw out even November, we go back to December, you're really only looking at June of next year. So the ability to do that. And I think for the sake of all the businesses that are involved, the small, the local, and one thing I did say, I asked, and I believe Andrew is here, I asked, I said, if your company, and I asked your owners, if your company rebid this, do they feel that they would be on top? And they said, yes, they still feel that they would be the top applicant. And I think it's only just for us to do this the right way, the one way. This is the rule. It's not going to hopefully change, knock on wood, midway. But I don't think we lose anything by being transparent in this process. So I would like to file a motion that we rebid the contract.
Second, Gomez.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Uribe, and a second by Commissioner Gomez. I do have further questions, however. Wait just a moment, I'll get to you. Certainly, what's, at this point, the part of what was said during the public comment period of time was, there were some comparisons made to the potential cost to the county of the contract. Would you review the, the difference in the cost if this is awarded? Based upon the, the rankings, where do we stand with the cost to the county?
So if you're interested in knowing the fee proposals from each, is that what you wanted to know?
That's correct.
Okay. So for Novoa Global, who's currently in the top-ranked firm, their fee proposal was what you see on the screen, the $31,872,000. Redspeed, who you heard from this morning during public comment, their fee proposal was $27,840,000. Vera Mobility, who's our incumbent, $37,302,240. Madaxo, which is doing businesses Elevate, $45,736,320.
Say that last number again, please.
What was the current company proposal that had, what was it again?
The current, our incumbent's fee proposal was $37,302,240.
So one firm was considerably higher than the others. The firm that's, at least at this point, has the, the award, Novoa, is four million approximately, higher than the next lowest, which was Novoa, and the other two firms are considerably higher. In terms of cost to the county, I don't know, there may be an argument that if we resolicited, that the county might save some money, because these other-
I agree.
-firms that are much higher, simply, was, was cost-
That was a criteria, yes.
That's the criteria, that's the determinant.
It's one criteria.
One criteria, because it was our fee, and not a bid, it cannot be the sole determinant of the board.
Price is one determinant. What distinguished, perhaps, you know, I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, the, the difference between what, the service that would be offered from the highest to the lowest? What was the distinction between them?
In terms of their fee proposal?
Yes. What was, were they, were they going to provide additional cameras, service?
No, it was the same exact fee proposal schedule that all had to complete. And so whatever their unit rates were for each of those line items came to their total, overall aggregate total for their proposal. But there was nothing different between any of the proposers' fees, other than whatever values they put in their proposal.
Okay. So I'm going back to my, my, I, I think the, the point I'm trying to make here is that now that this has happened, everybody got a, had opportunity to look behind the curtain, right, at how they were competing in the market space. And there may be some value to the county resoliciting, to drive down the overall costs of this contract to the county. Just saying, there may be some value there. But is there any other legal risk to the county if we made a decision to resolicit?
No, I mean, anybody can bring, bring a lawsuit, right? So if you don't resolicit, then number two could bring a lawsuit. If you do resolicit, number one could bring a lawsuit. So either way, but I don't think there's any great risk. I think, you know, you have a lot of discretion if you were to rebid this thing or, or, or put it back out on the street. I think there's a lot of discretion to do that.
Okay. So I just interjected that to bring some clarity to what the different issues may be at this point, that our board may need to consider as we make a decision. All right. So I think with that, Commissioner Simrad.
Thank you, Mayor. So one thing that's bothering me is that if we want to make a section where we adjust for price, that could make sense on the, on the argument that you just gave. But where I feel tentative is, is like, I, I, I bid grants all the time, contracts all the time. You don't get a second chance to make sections better. So the sections that were submitted, can they remain the sections that were submitted?
I'll let the staff respond to that.
No, if the, if the board directs us to cancel, the entirety of this solicitation is canceled. The proposals do not carry over, or any portion of those would not carry over into a different resolicitation. It essentially dies and is filed away, and we create a new RFP, which is the basis of any proposals going forward.
So from my shoes, as a person who bids frequently, what I would be upset about as a new applicant coming in, is that the existing ones that went through the process already received feedback in terms of points. So they have received predisposition of knowledge that the others don't have. That's, that would make me very upset as somebody who was going into the bidding process, to be like, these, these people went through the process, they got a grade from the county, they know where their deficit, they know how to plump it up, and now I'm new coming in, and I don't, I'm not privy to that knowledge.
They're not filing before.
But they have the, they have the public record.
Yeah, they can listen to this video.
So I don't, I don't see that necessarily as, as valid consideration. But, but in either case, we do have a motion and a second. Commissioner Uribe's motion was to rescind and resolicit, and there was a second, correct? Commissioner Gomez, if I remember correctly, was a second. I'm going to call a question, unless you all have other questions or comments. All right. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, the motion passes, and it is unanimous. So the action will be to essentially rescind and resolicit. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We're going to move forward now to the next item on our agenda, item B1. We'll call on Ms. Vicky Landon, there she is, to come forward to present the cultural tourism grants for FY 2026.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, Controller, Administrator Brooks. I'm so glad to be here today on behalf of our arts and cultural community. There are a number of members of our arts and cultural community in the room, if you all want to give a little wave, here in support of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Council's recommendations for our cultural tourism grant program in the coming year. So I'll go through the background of the grant program itself and touch a little bit on arts funding before digging into the grant history, and then my favorite part, which is the grant process. We'll touch a little bit on the funding recommendations themselves, and then I have a summary of some economic impact data to share with you before we get to the requested action. So as a reminder, the mission of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Council is to elevate Central Florida's arts and culture to that befitting a world-class community, and that work is overseen by a 13-member advisory council on which Commissioner Wilson sits, and we'd like to thank her very much for her participation there. The Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Council in our office helps support a number of grant programs that invest both general fund and tourist development tax dollars out into our nonprofit arts community. So you'll see at the 12 o'clock here on this graphic is our cultural tourism grant program. That's what we're here to talk about today. Next, moving down clockwise is our cultural facilities grant program, which supports construction and renovation projects at museums and auditoriums. Our venue subsidy program helps make it more affordable for our nonprofit arts and cultural community to rent space for programs and projects and events, and you're familiar with our blockbuster and special events fund for those big marquee-style 50,000-plus events in our community. Lastly, we invest both the TDT and general fund dollars into the United Arts of Central Florida grant pool, and we do have representatives from United Arts of Central Florida here as well. I'm really proud of the history and the growth of this program, with the growth of the TDT and the growth of the percentage allocation of the TDT that comes to arts and cultural affairs. In our first inaugural year of this grant program, this flagship grant program started in 2002, we funded four grants at a total of $500,000. And the requested action before you today is the approval of 39 applications with over $5.1 million of TDT invested into our nonprofit arts and cultural community. As with all of our grant programs, this one reflects three levels of approval. First, there is the review panel that reads and scores all of the applications themselves. That funding recommendation needs to be approved by the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Council before it comes before this board for your approval and consideration. I want to talk about this process because I'm really proud of how we've been able to put this grant process together. The application opened in late May of this year for this round of cultural tourism applications, and on June 10th, staff from United Arts of Central Florida and I co-hosted a how-to-apply workshop. We go through everything from the individual questions on the application, how to access the online portal, we review the scoring matrix so that applicants know the way they can put their best foot forward as it relates to this application. We take Q and A from people on the Zoom call, also recognizing that not all of our arts groups, particularly those that are community-led or emerging, can attend a Zoom in the middle of a workday. So we record it, and it's posted on the United Arts website for the entirety of the grant process as a reference for the applicants as they go throughout their application process. But we take another step further that I really love. We have a courtesy staff review of applications, that if you can get your stuff together about nine or 10 days before the due date, staff from United Arts and I will review the application for you, and we'll give feedback on, of course, typographical and grammatical errors, but things like your question in question three, that answer would go much better in question four, or your numbers aren't adding quite up in this budget form, and giving them an opportunity to have us lay eyes on it before it gets released to the advisory council itself. On July 20th this year, the applications were due, and that kicked off a multi-week United Arts staff review process. They're making sure all the links are clickable, all the uploaded attachments are loading, that all of the figures and backup materials support what's in the application themselves. And then in mid-August of this year, we held a full calibration and training exercise with the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Council, and then released the applications to them for review. They sat with those for a few weeks before a public review panel meeting at the Holden Heights Community Center, where all 39 applicants this year attended, answered questions, provided updates on their application. And on September 23rd, the recommendation you'll see today was unanimously approved by the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Council, and if you approve it today, the project period kicks off on January 1 as a calendar year grant program. Each of the applications is scored on a 100-point basis, with 25 points going to identity, so that's attention and standing, and how is your event innovative and unique and drawing attention to Orange County. We allocate 25 points to quality, which is the artistic excellence and the feedback and critical acclaim. So not only does your organization have a history of producing high-quality work, but what are the elements of the project you're proposing? Are you bringing in a well-known actor, or designer, or visual artist? This is a tourism grant. Cultural tourism is funded through the TDT, and so our largest category is tourism with 30 points dedicated to the marketing plan, the projected attendance, and how many of those audience members are projected to be tourists. And our final 20 points is on implementation. So that's things like outreach and impact of the work in the community, the operation and financial readiness of the applicant to make sure they can actually execute the project they're proposing. And then this is a dollar-for-dollar match, so we also evaluate the applicant on how much of their match is confirmed. Now, we, we have a rigorous application because we want to be good stewards of public dollars, but we also don't want the bar so high that our emerging and community-led groups can't access this pool of funding. So how do you solve that problem? So we've done that by a tiered scoring eligibility floor. So with the more dollars you are increasing, the rigor of your application increases. So those groups that are coming in perhaps for the first or second time, they're going to request $55,000 or less through the grant program. They only need to score a 70 out of 100 in order to be considered eligible for funding. But if you're going to max out this grant program and come in at the full $190,000 for this year, you need to score an 80 out of 100 in order to qualify. That said, I am proud to share that all 39 applicants this year met their 70, 75, or 80% score, and we really attribute that to things like the how-to-apply workshop, like the courtesy review, and the continued sophistication of our arts and cultural community. We did lose three applicants over last year. Last year, I brought you 40 together. A lot of those three organizations have chosen not to pursue a grant application in the coming year, either because of personal or financial circumstances at their nonprofit, they're not executing programming in the coming year that would be a fit. But we did pick up two new ones. You'll see our first new one here listed on the bottom of the screen, which is Florida Symphony Youth Orchestras at the $55,000 small category level. I'm not going to read all 39 of these out to y'all this afternoon, but we'll take a look at slide two and call out our second new applicant, which is New Generation Theatrical, also in at the small request category. You'll see a lot of names and faces that are familiar to you, and here I'll tell you that the total of all 39 applications is $5,164,747 for the coming grant year. Now, we get to work with a lot of really great research, resources, one of which is provided by Americans for the Arts. Every year, Americans for the Arts does an arts and economic prosperity study across the United States, and they break out the economic impact of arts and cultural activity in a number of geographical areas. So we are able to utilize their data for Orange County. They actually create a calculator based on the results of the most recent study, where you can plug in the budget amount, the attendance figures, and the geographical population of your MSA, and they'll tell you what your economic impact is. So these figures here are not hopes and dreams coquered up by our nonprofit community, but rather based in real third-party data, which is that the total sum of all 39 of these proposed projects will have a total economic impact of over $120 million in support over 2,000 full-time jobs. It's a 23-to-1 return on our $5.1 million investment, and is projected to have almost 2 million of audience attendees, 24% of which to be tourists. And of course, when we look at the qualitative benefit too, there is this increased awareness of Orange County as an international destination for arts and culture. So in summary, this year, I'm bringing before you 39 applications that are recommended for funding, two of whom are new. This is a dollar-for-dollar matching grant, so you would expect that with a $5.1 million request, that maybe the total project budgets were 10.2, right, that everybody comes to the table with their dollar-for-dollar and calls it a day. That is not the case with our arts and cultural communities. So many of them have exceeded that dollar-for-dollar match, that the total project budgets of these 39 projects is over $41 million, that we're investing from the private sector, from private philanthropy, corporate support, and other means. So again, our five- So again, our $5,164,747 TDT investment will result in economic impact of over $120 million and we are again planning an act awards ceremony to lift up each of these grantees in February 2026. You see February 2025's up here. So on behalf of all of these organizations here in the community and up on the screen, we'd like to thank you for your steadfast support of arts and culture in our community and then make our recommendation, which is to award cultural tourism grant awards for fiscal year '26 in the amount of $5,164,747 to the 39 organizations shown previously. And I'm happy to take questions or comments.
All right, thank you. Of course, we have made a commitment that we will increase our investment in the arts, the cultural arts, et cetera, within our community. We're pretty fortunate we've been able to do that in the last several years. I do find it somewhat interesting that we ended up with a number of $5,164,747. That's... So I was curious, so when I went back and I looked at, you know, most of the organizations who submitted their proposals, they had zeros, you know, at the end. But we had maybe four. The one with $72,547. I don't know how y'all got that precise, but okay. One at $172,130 and then one at $113,771. Oh, we did have one at $54,083. And I'm just, you know, is it that precise? You know, because how did all these other organizations come out with zeros? You know, at the end. And these five or six, you know, just came up with these kind of odd numbers. Anyway, it's just a thought, you know, it's a math problem there going on somewhere. When people submit their proposals, we certainly take them at their word. But that's an anomaly. I just want to let y'all know the way these numbers came out. We'll see when this all ends up, what those numbers end up being. But for argument's sake, it is, the blessing here is that we had so many organizations who have been able to submit because of the strong tourist development tax receipts, derivative of the strong tourism that we have in our community. And our ability right now to maintain and make decisions at the local level of how we expend our tourism development tax receipts is really important. I hope you all remember that as a state kind of goes into the session, if you hear conversations about changes to the TDT, I just hope that those of you who are benefactors, if there's some substantial change to reduce our ability to make these decisions at a local level, that you become advocates on behalf of your local government to be able to continue to be able to make these decisions locally. We're closest to where the people are and how we know our communities. We know this community perhaps better than we know the community in Miami and vice versa. So I just, I say all that because there's different proposals on the horizon out there. So pay attention to it, you know, we will try to make certain that we point it out to you. With that, I'll open it up for a conversation by members of the board. Questions, we'll start with Commissioner Wilson.
Big shocker, I hit my button because I just was so excited to see this on the agenda today. I'm so honored to be appointed to the Arts and Cultural Affairs Council and feel so blessed to be able to sit amongst the creativity that is part of Orange County's environment. I think it's such an important takeaway and the mayor said it and I just want to reinforce it that this isn't a subsidy, this isn't just us, you know, being gratuitously generous. This is an investment and it's an investment in something that is a big economic driver and also a incredible quality-of-life benefit. And those things don't often get to intersect. So what an incredible place that we're able to do that. I just wanted to hear what your thoughts were on. I know that I've connected you with a number of small groups and feel really grateful that you're able to do sort of that walkthrough of the process and there's a lot, lot of hand-holding, which I don't think is true for grants in so many other areas. But your thoughts on how we can continue to sort of encourage the timid, if you will, organizations? And how can we as commissioners continue to support the mission?
That's a great question, thank you. I think this is where we rely really heavily on our partnership with United Arts of Central Florida. I know Jennifer Evans is here, Trudy Wild is here from that staff as well. We've seen that a lot of the United Arts grants might feel a little more achievable for a small organization or an independent artist. They have smaller, like $5,000 community project grants that maybe don't feel quite as red tape burdensome as a public grant like ours. That said, you know, one of our sort of easiest barrier-to-entry grants is due in three days. If anyone hasn't gotten your application yet, the venue subsidy grant program is due on Friday. And this is one where any nonprofit arts and cultural organization registered in Orange County can get up to 50% of their venue rental costs for a concert or an exhibition back, whether they are renting Steinmetz Hall or a church assembly hall in Orange County. And so that oftentimes can be a little bit easier of a grant program for a nonprofit to access for the first time. It feels more administrative in nature. You don't really have to get up before a panel and justify your application. And then from there, it's really relationship-building on our behalf. You know, our office remains really open. United Arts has an entire outreach department whose job it is to interface with the nonprofit community and answer questions. So we continue to reference back and forth to each other a lot.
Thank you so much, great work.
Commissioner Uribe.
Vicky, I think I talked to you enough about all the things that is going on and I gotta commend you publicly for the incredible work and feedback we've heard from many organizations. I will say even the Pine Castle people have actually said, "What a great wealth of information." They feel like there's a possibility and I think that's what's great. I had the pleasure of attending one of your roundtables and had so much fun and found people who are gonna teach me how to sculpt and do all kinds of things when I was there. But I think what's really important, and I think the best feedback that I get is that you have gone way beyond the call of duty to be inclusive. Yes, anybody can go to United Arts. A lot of artists, again, are like, "Okay, those are the bigwigs, that's the business of art." But when it comes to just meeting all those creative minds, they're not business people, they're not paperwork people. They just want to do arts. And what I kind of find what's so engaging about these conversations is that we keep talking about other ways to expose art to the people, expose, continue to expose art to young people, which, you know, you and I are both huge fans with our own kids being so actively involved. But also being an inviting, an inviting community, unlike the trends that we're seeing not only statewide and nationally where it's not being considered as important. But when you, I was recently at an event where they're talking about Gen Z's and all these people and how they're so hyper-focused on electronics, that arts actually works a different part of their brain. And there was a neurologist who said, "If you got involved in the arts, you could actually repair some of the damage that's happening because of those electronic things." So there's hope out there. And I think that's what's super important is that we keep that message of it's not only brain health-wise, but it's great for our community. And it's, I think art is the one thing that when you go, it's so diverse, I mean, depending on who it is. And lastly, I think in everything that we went through with TDT dollars and pushing for this and pushing for that, I think the silver lining of it all is that we gave better opportunities for you to do what you're doing right now, which is offering these grants to local folks. The only thing that I had mentioned to you that I love that you shared with me, but I only want to make it public so everyone else can hear it, is organizations don't think that they would qualify for this because they're like, "Well, how do I, as this organization..." And I brought Pioneer Days into it, a two-day event where people come from all over. "How do I quantify saying that I would qualify for TDT dollars because I'm bringing people here?" And you were so gracious to say that there's different ways basically to skin a cat. It's not just like one way of, "Hey, this hotel and that hotel and these people." But if you could just divulge for all those that are listening today or those that are listening and are gonna talk to other people, a little bit more of how an organization who may not think they qualify for these funds actually can when it comes to justifying the TDT aspect of being able to qualify for these dollars.
Absolutely. I think that's gonna look different for every applicant, right? I think we have a great collections of festivals that are represented here, like the Florida Film Festival at Enzian or the International Fringe Festival, which is gonna rely really heavily on things like having global partnerships and bringing in films and performers and talent from other countries and other places around the states. And then I think for organizations that are producing a season of programming, we really talk to them about their marketing set. So you don't necessarily, we're not tracking directly down into individual confirmed hotel rooms. A lot of these organizations self-report based on audience intercept surveys. So when you're selling a ticket, are you taking the zip code of the person that's buying a ticket? If you are a free museum, like our Holocaust Memorial Resource and Education Center is, do you have a logbook where when folks come in, they write down their name and where they're from? So you don't need to have a really high sophisticated ticketing system. You don't need to have 40 partnerships with tourism marketing organizations. If you're doing a good faith effort to track your attendees, if you're advertising out of area and you have one or two really great hotel partnerships in the community, will that get you to a score out of 95 to max us out at 190? Probably not, but will it get you over the 70 points that you can get your foot wet in this grant program? You know, what we've really gotten to see a lot of over the years, I think the vast majority of those groups in this room that are in that high 190,000-max level started off as a small or a medium category and then worked their way up through the years. So the grant program also helps sort of grow up the applicants within it once you get your foot in. And so get your foot in and start.
Yeah, and the only other thing I want to say is to all of your grantees, have them invite us. We'd love to see our dollars in the community and want to support you, you know. And I think all of us have gone to a Nutcracker here, I've gone to an Aladdin musical or this and that. Invite us, let us see those dollars at work so that we can keep fighting for those dollars for you. So thank you and thank you all for being here and we love you guys.
Commissioner Semirat.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Vicky, to all of your accomplishments. We briefly talked, when you were giving me the presentation, about distinguishing the difference between tourists that come to these events versus visitors. And I'm going to use this as an opportunity to talk to my colleagues on the board also. It's that when we have tourists that come, it means they traveled more than 50 miles and they spent more than 24 hours here. And generally, we get that TDT from them. But we also have a really big visitor population that comes. And so they travel, but they don't spend the night and we largely don't collect a lot of revenue off of them. And so they escape our economic, our local economy with direct economic impact in the restaurants and in, you know, paying valet and going to the event, but in terms of anything that could go back into community development. And so I had asked Vicky, you know, would it be possible for the organizations in order to provide some just method of data collection for a certain amount of time to gauge how many visitors we actually get in order to determine if it would be beneficial to do a visitor development tax, a VDT? And I know that, you know, new taxes are never favorable in Tallahassee, nor are they here in Orange County, you know. But I think that we're coming up onto such a precarious time period of not knowing where revenue sources can come from, that we have to start thinking outside the box. And there is no state preemption right now on this type of tax collection. So perhaps it's something for us to consider that, because one thing that we should all know is that cultural tourists and cultural visitors have higher tourist receipts than what we see from other tourist segments. So it makes it beneficial to explore how we could further segment that group to raise additional revenue for programming in Orange County. So I wanted to just bring it to, I want to say thank you to Vicky and then to board members. Perhaps that's something that we can explore.
All right, more to follow. Commissioner Gomez-Cudero.
Thank you. So I have to say thank you, Vicky. I mean, even though, I mean, I'm not in the board and I see how happy Commissioner Wilson is there and enjoying. I love it, I love it. I have to say that I learned so much and, you know, thank you for everything you do and that extra mile you, you know, you run specifically. And I want to say it here because they, you know, I want the people to hear a, having, you know, bringing up the flyers that you made up so the organizations can be easier, be able to apply for the grants. But more than that, given the opportunity for Hispanic organizations to come and participate as well. So I have to say thank you because I said I was gonna do that. So thank you again and anything you need, we're here for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Mayor and Vicky, thank you. You know, you do a really good job of creating stages for a lot of these artists, whether it's here in the atrium or at the multicultural center. So continue to do that, continue to find ways to let them know that they're seen and that someone values their work. Because I think, again, it's a big challenge to put in hours and sometimes months into creating your craft. And then you wonder if someone's gonna show up. And moreover, not only show up, will they buy a ticket to see me? And so I just think it's really amazing kind of the work that you do and how you go about doing it. And, you know, Terry might beat me up for this, but you look way better than Terry doing this. No offense to Terry. So just thank you for showing up for everyone and I appreciate you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Terry, sorry about that, man. Commissioner Wilson, do you have a potential motion?
Yes, please, I'm so sorry. I'd like to move for the requested actions.
Second, Gomez.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Gomez-Cudero. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes and it is unanimous. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got more business, we're gonna move forward. Ms. Neighbors, the president and CEO of Career Source of Central Florida, has been very patient this afternoon and waiting to get to this moment as well as others. But we're gonna ask her to come forward. She's gonna give us an annual update on the work that they're doing. They are a tremendous partner of ours here within Orange County. And there's no action on this presentation, but it is designed to simply give us information. And with that, you'll recognize, Ms. Neighbors.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you county commissioners for this opportunity to tell you a little bit about the work of Career Source Central Florida and also about our partnership with Orange County and the Level Up Orange Project. Really, I want to tell you some stories today, this afternoon. And one of the stories I wanted to mention, well, you heard already, from the young man Zach Cole, who talked about the impact of Level Up Orange on his life and his new career. Each quarter, we also send you a little update on the Level Up Orange Project. And one of the updates that grabbed me for September was another gentleman, Jason Diaz, who actually had come in looking for a new opportunity. He had been impacted during the economic changes in COVID and he was able to go through the residential maintenance technician program at Valencia College back in 2023. He's still working there at the Concord Rents where he immediately got a job as a residential maintenance technician and he is now very happy in that new role. And really, Career Source Central Florida's impact through our workforce programs and the Level Up program is really a story of impact. So thank you again for this opportunity. Career Source Central Florida is the regional workforce development board for the five counties that surround the city of Orlando. And I want to take a few minutes this morning, or this afternoon, to talk about what is a regional workforce development board. But for you to know, of 21 boards in the state of Florida, we are actually the second-largest board. We annually serve at least 36,000 residents in the five-county region and 5,000-plus businesses. This year, our budget, including all of the resources we receive through Florida Commerce, through Level Up Orange, through other public resources, and as a nonprofit organization, through grants and revenue generation, we actually have $30 million total. What is a workforce development board? I realize I've been here many times before, but it really has a very important local importance for you all because earlier, Mayor, you mentioned the ability for local decisions to be made by local players. And a regional workforce development board is really structured under, first of all, the U.S. Department of Labor's Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act that sets out workforce development boards across the country. So while we are one of 21 in the state of Florida, we are actually one of almost 600 across the country. The boards actually receive resources mostly from the U.S. Department of Labor that come to the state through Career Source Florida. That board is appointed under the guidance of the law and also through the governor's office. And that board then decides how many regions exist in the state and partners with Florida Commerce to actually take the allocations of federal workforce dollars and flow them down to the local level. flow them down to the local levels. What's really neat about Florida is that for almost, well, really 20 years, Florida has put all of the different workforce programs and funds under one umbrella, Career Source umbrella, and ensures that there's really no wrong door, virtually or physically, for an individual in any community to walk in or a business to walk in and receive services, regardless of what program in all of the different funding that they're applying for. So then, as the dollars are appropriated to Florida, Florida actually then says to the local regional consortiums or individual counties, you decide how the boards are structured and how the budgets and fiscal entities are created. And so we have a local consortium, Mayor Demings, you are the chair of the local consortium, and we have four other county commissioners that meet semi-annually and determine the board members. They actually appoint the board. They also approve our budget and approve our plan. And then the local workforce development board, which is Career Source Central Florida here in this region, is made up of a majority of business positions that represent the five counties, as well as community leaders from education, community organizations, economic development, and education. We also here in this region have actually five physical career centers. Two are in Orange County. And they provide really all of the resources to the residents that we serve, as well as to the businesses. We also have a virtual career center that came into being particularly during COVID, that also provides all of the services that we deliver in one of the centers. Our funding this year is actually made up, as I mentioned, from multiple titles of programs, probably about 13 or 14, coming through Florida Commerce down to the regional workforce development board. But we also have other public funding, the Level Up Orange, which we'll talk about. But we have public funding from other counties, from other municipalities. And then we also, as a nonprofit organization, have earned revenue and we have private donations and also grants. So our total budget this year is $30 million, and that's kind of how the pie splits out. So what do we do? Well, we really do create a customized service approach that bridges success between businesses and individuals. And so for each individual, their plan will be different. And so we provide that plan of career coaching, awareness for individuals from 14 all the way through whenever you want to work. If you want to work into your 90s, we've got a program for you. So career coaching is available, skills development, which is actually where we invest in training through scholarships, internships, on-the-job training supports, and of course, job readiness, work maturity, financial literacy, and then, most importantly, employment connections to those businesses that are looking for workers. And for businesses, we can actually be in outreach of their human resources department. We can provide customized labor market information. Often, businesses come to us and say, what should I hire this position for? How does this job description work with our labor market? And we can provide them professional assistance. We can also help them directly in finding and hiring qualified talent. And then we do have resources, for example, in artificial intelligence to actually upskill and train existing workers who need those skills to be competitive and retain their jobs. And those are just some of the businesses that we work with, not only in hiring, but also in partnerships. And you also heard earlier from additions, who has been not only an amazing employer partner in hiring people, but also in supporting our young adult programs. So regional impact this past year. Last year, we know that we served over 36,000 individuals, close to 37,000 in the five county region. I would say to you that Orange County has the largest population. And so historically, Orange County makes up 50% or more of the total individuals that we serve. We also were able to put 3,300 individuals into career training. That means that they might have gone to Valencia College, for example, in that residential maintenance technician program, or they could have actually gone into a direct hire at a business where we provided wage subsidy for that business to hire a person who perhaps didn't have the requisite skills they needed, but could do that through an on-the-job training or through internship. There's a number, and apprenticeship, very importantly. In this last year, we have put a lot of individuals into apprenticeship programs in a lot of different, both construction fields as well as non-traditional apprenticeship programs. We know through wage records that 3,659 individuals were hired this past year and at an average wage of about $20.33. So in Orange County specifically, as I mentioned, really, this number, 30,000 over the last five years, is for those individuals, not who just come into a center and get a resume consultation, but those individuals who have an assigned professional career consultant, who are working on a career plan and are moving towards a new job, a better job, a different job. Through Level Up Orange, we've served 3,351, and I'll talk about that in a minute. That is the program that we are in partnership with you all on through the American Rescue Plan resources. But really, those other resources that come to us through Department of Labor, through the state and Career Source Florida, those are the bulk of how we're serving individuals in the region. This is actually a five-year review, at an average wage overall of $18.26. I want to, I don't want to take you back to the pandemic, but we know that the pandemic really changed many things for all of us. Our unemployment rate in this region was 23%. That's unheard of. And we were in a crisis. At the time that that pandemic really shut all of us down during March, April, and May, through this commission and mayor's leadership, we wanted to very quickly get people back to work. And so we were very proud to be a part of the mayor's task force in reopening the businesses and also looking at, at that time, the CARES Act funding that had come in to very quickly reach out and help individuals and businesses that were struggling to get reopened, to get re-employed. And so we were very honored to receive a grant through the COVID-19 funding. And that grant was called Help Us Here. If you recall, that operated from about July through December of 2020. And during that time, we served 1,500 residents, the majority of which went into training programs or internship programs directly with employers. And 1,100 individuals were actually hired during that time. It was a very quick turnaround in program, but it also really was the genesis for what is now the Level Up Orange Project that came to being under the American Rescue Plan. In Level Up Orange, oh, thank you very much. Yeah, I'm losing my voice. In Level Up Orange, through your partnership, American Rescue Plan, we actually then took some of the innovations that we had learned during the Help Us Here or CARES Act project and created new approaches and more training for individuals. And so these are some of the innovations that were incorporated into the Level Up Project, which began in 2021. We created neighborhood navigators. Those navigators actually were professional career development staff who would go out to community organizations or community centers in Orange County, taking our services that normally are provided either virtually or in office, out into areas where people were and needed support. We also targeted populations who were still struggling to become successful during the aftermath of the pandemic. So we had programming for veterans, encore workers, older individuals or mature individuals who are looking to have a different career or change career, individuals with disabilities, and also individuals who were justice involved. One of the other innovations that we had was we knew that in our career process, we didn't have a standardized career assessment across all of Orange County. And so we actually, through the Level Up Project, selected a career assessment that now is used with all of our participants so that we have a good sense of their values, their personality, their aptitudes, and their interests in educational levels. Some new opportunities that came to being in the Level Up Project were also, and many of you have been to our graduations for access to career pathways. So access to career pathways is really the vehicle that has allowed us to reach out to those populations that may be more significantly impacted by our economy. So for example, we have an encore worker that I'm going to have you hear from in a minute, who talked about what the access to career pathways opportunity was. It was a five-week program that allowed that individual and several others to actually understand the labor market, to readjust their skills, to think about how they presented themselves to the community, consider training if that was an appropriate option, and then retool themselves basically for a new opportunity. We also, many of you as commissioners, were a part of our public sector academy for young adults in high school. They actually got to try out and learn about all of the different departments and facets of Orange County government and understand what careers might be in Orange County. The High School Career Express, I'm going to talk a little bit more about later, but that has been an amazing program that has taken young people, juniors and seniors, on their early dismissal days on Wednesday, to our local businesses and immerse them in what are all of the career opportunities. And then our community hubs is really an extension of the Navigator Program, where we're actually now, instead of having just standalone career centers, actually creating small community career centers like we have now at the East Valencia campus over on Econocachi. So let me have you hear from our encore worker in his own words.
Prior to Career Source, for 19 years, I was self-employed. I was working in the, as a vendor to the nightclub venue, the music industry here in central Florida. I became very, very good at my job, but I had totally outgrown that type of business. I retired from that. I hadn't given up on life and seeking new opportunities. But then I looked around, again, at my age, my era, what are the options? It seemed there weren't that many doors available any longer. So I went to Career Source asking for help with a resume. Then they asked, well, we have this thing called Encore Development. With Level Up, I want to be involved with that. Yes. My best takeaway was three things: options, opportunities, and optimism. Those are big concepts, each of those. Career Source covers all of them. They offer more positive thinking, positive attitude, and nonjudgmental access to the things that I needed, which was I just needed to be told that I'm valuable again. Next part of my career is to actually take what makes me happy and expand on that. I'm looking to do what makes me happy and what I enjoy most is helping people. Like when I got home, you know, the family looks at me and goes, how did it go? How did it go? Did you get a job? I was like, better, better. I know exactly what I need to do to get that job that's going to make me happy.
Gregory is actually working as a security officer now at $20 an hour, and he is very excited for his new career. So Level Up Orange by the numbers, and from the years '22 through '25, and these numbers are actually reflective of our June 30, 2025 report. As of June 30, we have actually served, as I mentioned, over 3,351 workers. We're actually, as of September, at 3,500 workers, which surpasses the goal of 3,500 that we had set in contract and partnership with you at the commission. We have, as of June, completed 957 individuals into all kinds of different training. And we know that as of June, we have 1,887 residents hired at an average wage of 1,881. But what's exciting is a quarter of them are starting at wages over $26 an hour. So it really is making an impact. And also, if you look at the different kinds of industries, it is industries really across the spectrum that we have here in central Florida, healthcare being the highest industry where people are going to work, but then also followed by our construction and our logistics and transportation. We do have a number of jobs that are not categorized, but those are jobs like boat builder and customer service representative that could go into many, many different fields. We don't do any of this work alone. Career Source Central Florida in the five county region really has over 50 partnerships with community-based organizations, community groups, educational entities that we rely on to actually provide training, provide partnership, like additions to provide support, like the Early Learning Coalition, to provide resources for our young families with young children, and organizations like the Samaritan Resource Center, which also was a partner with an access to career pathways program for individuals who are at risk or homeless. Collaboration is really what Career Source Central Florida bases all of our work on. And we are very, very thankful and proud of the impact of this program over the last three and a half years. But I do want to mention the High School Career Express because I know several of you have also participated in High School Career Express graduations. This was really a new project through the Level Up Orange Program. The Career Source Central Florida and none of the workforce development boards around the country have dedicated funding for in-school youth programming. But we do have resources and connections to the business community and often hear that the business community is interested in making sure that young people know what career opportunities are right in their backyard. You heard Richard mention earlier from additions that they were honored not just to support and fund the different programming, but also to actually have an opportunity to showcase what additions does to the young people that are going through the program. We have already had over 200, close to 300 individuals who participated in Career Express, High School Career Express. And in this next year, we will actually hit the 400 mark, which is what we intended to do. And what's really exciting is we have actually worked with over 50% of the high schools in Orange County for this project.
I joined the High School Career Express program basically just to see what different job opportunities there are out there.
This is such an amazing program to go through when you don't know what you want to do later on in life.
This program is going to help me find out what I want to do in the future.
There's just so many different jobs and so many different places that you go with this Career Express program. There's definitely something that you will find interesting about it.
I would recommend the High School Career Express program to any student that isn't necessarily sure what field they want to go into. Or if they do have a field in mind, it still lets them get more experience with that field because sometimes you're only working based off assumptions and you're not gaining real-world experience. And this lets you gain that real-world experience.
One really cool thing with the High School Career Express group is when they went into the surgical rooms at the HCA Hospital in Lake Nona, they actually got to wear scrubs and walk through and kind of see the different aspects. Well, they were so excited, they kept the scrubs on when they got on the bus to go and wore them home. They were so excited to be able to understand that kind of career field. And the folks at HCA were very impacted as well. So looking ahead, key priorities, we are coming into the last year of the Level Up Project funding in 2026. We are continuing, as I said, to expand the youth programs. One of the exciting things that Level Up Orange has allowed us to do is to take this High School Career Express program and connect it to the work that we do in the summer with the Summer Youth Employment Training Program. Through Level Up Resources as well as other resources, this past year, we had 1,600 young people in career opportunities and actual job experiences this past summer. And we hope to be at that same number or more in the coming years. And then we also want to expand our career awareness in our high-growth industries beyond healthcare to the advances that are being made in economics and manufacturing, aerospace, semiconductor, our modeling and simulation programming, and many of the other great careers that are here in central Florida. We also are excited, as I said, to expand our overall funding opportunities. And as we look to the future, we know, like you have been talking about this morning, that there are federal funding cuts on the horizon. For Career Source Central Florida and the resources we receive, we've been looking at these funding reductions really pre-pandemic. We knew back in 2019 that our budget was almost 95% comprised of allocations that were coming from different federal were coming from different federal programs. Today, we are actually at 75% and continuing to grow other resources, but we need the other resources and the partnerships with programming. Our Orange County Public School Partners stepped up and provided all the transportation for the High School Career Express, for example. So we are going to be very aggressive in pursuing other resources and funding to continue to expand and support our programming. And then we hope that we are able to actually continue to provide great partnerships and collaboration with you all in Orange County and continue to expand the amazing programs that we've been put together through the Level Up Orange Project. So I thank you so much for your time and attention this afternoon, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
All right, there are questions. We'll start with Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the update information. I just want to compliment your team because they are really good about communicating with us, and we have a, periodically we get blast for information, but also if we ever have to reach out. I will tell you, it's interesting to talk about the Encore opportunities, and I love it being called the Encore opportunities, because I recently had a conversation with a retiree who was a corporate person, her whole life, one corporation, big corporation here in Orange County, not going to mention, but is really lost right now in both financially, because they're healthy and still have a lot of stuff that they need to do, want to do, and also they have a dependent at home.
Yes.
And so I never thought about connecting that person with you all. Now I'm thinking about doing that, and what is the best way we can help support those Encore workers to find you?
You can actually, you know, send them directly to me, go to our website. We do have this programming, but also our career consultants can provide them one-on-one assistance. And as I said, really, those services are available to anyone. There's not any kind of, you know, requirement that they can receive those services. It is the largest growing number of people looking for career change opportunities, and there are many, many, many of us in the boomer generation that are looking for perhaps something different or are retiring and still need to have some kind of income and support. During the COVID pandemic, Commissioner, we also saw a lot of people who were impacted directly in high-level jobs, and many of those jobs didn't return. And so they have also gone into, say, their own businesses, and we've connected them to those resources. So definitely, please refer them directly, refer them directly to me, and I'll get them to the right place.
I will, thank you. And then my last question, I think it was the slide on page, or it was Slide six, where it has the businesses that you assist, and I see a pop on there, so it was kind of cool to see this municipality, you know, CPS, that we know there's other agencies. Why is it Orange County on there? And this may be a question for our HR, our new wonderful HR Director. I would love to see a direct connection there. We know that our HR staff here, they are constantly scrambling, and if they can get that professional assistance in trying to place people in these positions, and, you know, you talk about entry level all the way up, there's so many great opportunities here at Orange County, and I think it would be a huge asset, so.
Well, yes, you are a wonderful employer partner as well. The Public Sector Academy really started here and opened up the eyes of a lot of young people about what's available at Orange County for jobs, but we do work with your Human Resources Department. We can always be more intentional about doing that, so I would welcome that opportunity. We have candidates for those jobs.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Commissioner Gomes-Cadárez.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation, and I have to say that I get very good along with my, well, my resident there from District Four.
Yes, I have my great staff here.
Yes.
Yes, Tadar, Leo, Gio.
Yes. But I have a question. You know that I am the Chair for Commissioner Action Board at this time, right? And Commissioner Wilson and I are a part, and Commissioner Uribe as well. But I have a question, and I know you all are members too, so that's why I want to bring it up. Can Career Source consider some strategy for helping bring more attention to jobs, program, and events that can be held in cooperation with community action?
Yes, we would love to be able to do that, definitely, and so we will definitely look into that and connect that back through our member.
Okay, so let's get together with Ms. Lavon and so that way we can bring that up. Thank you. Thank you so much. See, that was easy.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Semir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for everything that you do. My team and I, we would love the opportunity just to reach out to you because we've received some emails regarding people looking for jobs with special needs, and so we'll follow up, but I wanted to congratulate you on all of your successes, and thank you.
Well, thank you. We also do have what we call disability navigators. And so we have a woman who is the lead, Angela Hunter, who actually works with individuals who may have some, just barrier or not sure how to, you know, adjust their resume and their skills to the market. And so she actually has individuals in all of our centers and our virtual center that can assist individuals with special needs.
That's great. And we've also received some feedback from people with special needs who have used Career Source. It'll be a good meeting for us to exchange.
Yes.
So thank you so much.
It would be great for us to learn. Yes, thank you.
All right. That's it for the questions. So, great presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
We do look forward to continuing to engage with you, and if there's an opportunity to strengthen that bond between us and our HR, we certainly will look to do that as well. So been my privilege to chair the consortium.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for your leadership, and thank you, Commissioners, for your partnership and the opportunities we look forward to the future in partnering together. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, and with that, we'll move forward on our agenda. Last but not least, Ms. Alyssa Barber Torres, our Chief Innovation and Emerging Technology Officer, will be coming forward. She's going to be presenting on our STEM Grant Recipient Program. This, again, is an item that doesn't require any specific action by the board, but want to inform you of some of the great work that we're doing. With that, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, Comptroller Diamond, County Administrator Brooks, again, Alyssa Barber Torres, the county's Chief Innovation and Emerging Technology Officer, here to briefly highlight the impacts and outcomes of the Board's investment in several science, technology, engineering, and math organizations, and we're fortunate to have a couple of them here with us today as well, and we certainly thank them for their patience, and we'll look forward to hearing from them as well. So what I'll do today is talk about the fiscal year 2025 investments that the Board has made, highlight the grant outcomes of each of the organizations, and offer a brief summary as well as answer any questions that you have about the county's administration of this program, assisted by Lee Peters and David Vols of the Innovation Office, who do tremendous work supporting this program. And at that point, I'll be able to turn it over to our agencies who have joined us here, and we'll hear from them in alphabetical order. So I will turn it over to Dr. Powell of Collegiate Pathways, and we have about five minutes per agency allotted on the agenda to hear from them directly as they talk about outcomes and answer your questions. So in fiscal year 2025, the Board of County Commissioners continued to make investments that began in fiscal year 2021. And generally, the mission and vision of this program is to give students science, technology, engineering, and math skills and project-based learning to help them access high-wage jobs and be a part of Orange County's technology workforce for the high-technology jobs, both currently and in the future. In doing so, it also offers teacher professional development, so educators are best equipped to handle these very specialized subjects in an engaging and current way in the classroom setting. So they focus on high-tech skills, robotics, AI, cybersecurity, aerospace, and modeling simulation and training. And the Board's level of investment in the current fiscal year for each agency is listed here. Of course, thinking back to the Mayor's comments about the arts grants, you'll note these are all very specific requests down to the dollar. These are STEM organizations, so the math is always mathing, but we'll hear from them in terms of the impacts of the investment to come this year. So first, for the grant outcomes, you'll be familiar with Collegiate Pathways under the name of Tech Sassy Girls, during which they have offered for many years programs that assist girls in developing those high-tech skills through summer programs and an annual conference. They focus heavily on career readiness, mentoring, and entrepreneurship, and one of their signature programs is this Pearls and Tech Accelerator you see pictured here, where they work with the girls to develop specific, community-based solutions to actual problems, such as dealing with residents who are unhoused, and this project-based learning helps connect users to resources. So they have an AI-based chatbots that the teams developed here and showcased to get that career feedback. Next, turning to First Robotics, and again, we appreciate the patience of the many First Robotics guests who have joined us today. And there are a number of teams throughout Orange County that have had tremendous success in robotics competitions in acquiring these skills. And as I'm sure they'll highlight for you, these skills are not just robotic skills, they're skills in business development, marketing, public speaking, really affecting a wealth of careers and reminding us that the high-tech workforce also depends on these careers to be able to help high-tech companies thrive. So there's a place for everyone with First Robotics, and we've highlighted a number of their teams here who really cross Orange County, you know, from Biflo all the way west through Orlando Science Schools, South Orlando, Pine Hills, and we're grateful for their accomplishments and their many volunteers. So looking at those volunteers, there are 115 from local companies in their most recent competition, and they served almost 2,000 students from 51 teams worldwide. And it's important to note that these students coming to the University of Central Florida, where this is hosted, are exposed to UCF and its many strengths as a world-class STEM institution, and the Dean of the College of Engineering and Computer Sciences makes a point each year to address the students, welcome them to the campus. They see it as an important part of their recruiting mission, and again, happy to support that effort. And these teams spent an average of $2,465 on hotel rooms, meals, and entertainment, so part of the tourism and visitation on which Orange County relies and have a tremendous economic impact for this event. So looking at First's grant outcomes, this is highlighted from an independent survey that they had here, showing how they're able to help underrepresented populations join and thrive in STEM-based fields. Turning now to the Florida Photonics Cluster. Florida Photonics Cluster expands optics and photonics awareness, outreach, and student engagement via community partnerships and education. Echoing some of the themes we've heard earlier, many people don't know that photonics is actually a field or what photonics involves. It is the application of light and light properties to solve applied scientific, technology, and medical issues. So a lot of instruments, a lot of things that help us thrive are all based in photonics and optics. So they spread that message through transportation and materials for students who can participate in UCF's Center for Research in Electric Optics and Lasers camp that they hold for photonics to help spread the message of those opportunities in photonics careers. They also do co-branded events through regional partnerships and offer Orange County sponsorship recognition, as noted here, for the Board's investment. Orange County has also partnered with them through Orange TV to do a video that offers information about the many career opportunities in optics and photonics, and those videos and brochures are shown at a number of different science, technology, engineering, and math events, and we continue to partner to bring those resources to the community. Turning now to the National Center for Simulation, there is an extensive program that they offer through the Department of Defense Starbase Central Florida STEM Academy. This offers free education for 25 hours that is really cutting-edge and part of a national curriculum that the Department of Defense rolls out for fifth-grade students, the teachers that support them in that educational setting, as well as a number of volunteer mentors who are able to bring that career perspective to the participants. They also offer free access to the competitive robotics teams that First hosts, and those achievements are highlighted here in terms of the mentors they also attract. Other summer programs include Gains in Education of Math and Science, again, a 25-hour curriculum, really offering an immersive experience to the students there, and some of the topics they cover are drones, robotics, Arduino's, which are kits that involve, that provide electronics education and real project-based learning, the chance to tinker themselves with these resources, mixed-reality environments, and AI-powered 3D modeling. So many of the careers we are hearing about that are just emerging, GEMS offers that opportunity today. This is free of charge, and a $125 stipend is offered to campers for participating for that six-week commitment. It covers sixth to 10th grade students and is supported by interns and mentors as well. Also, Cyber Camp offers a similar duration of 25 hours, focuses on middle and high school students, and attracts those mentors as well. In the National Center for Simulation's focus, again, is to offer that enhanced STEM pipeline of workforce-ready students, and this is supported by that ecosystem of mentors and educators, and we can see it's an involved process that involves several stages to be able to reach the workforce, and they're grateful for the Board's investment to continue that pipeline. They also offer internships and scholarships, and this is support that is extended through the Board's investment at the college level through summer internships, college work-study, and other means. They also offer a significant educator training opportunity at the ITSEC Conference, which the Board will know is the major conference globally for the modeling, simulation, and training industry. So they're able to bring educators from across the US, give them the cutting-edge skills and opportunity to incorporate modeling, simulation, and training into their teaching practices. And then finally, they facilitate student participation in a number of community-based events, all of which are listed here. Turning now to Orange County Public Schools, there is a comprehensive slate of programming they offer in schools across Orange County addressing these high-tech skills, including, again, the robotics team support that others offer to the First teams. They had 46 companies supporting the event, again, having that tremendous impact in the community, including 47 Orange County senior citizens who participated as volunteers. So again, those Encore opportunities can also include volunteerism, you know, for the many worthwhile organizations creating a difference for our youth. And they also offer STEM professional development for teachers. Turning now to UCF Foundation, their initiative is under the iSTEM moniker and draws from different parts of the university. In some of the recent changes that they made, they are focusing the Board's investment on outreach, including the reach of STEM initiatives to partner with the community and schools already offering this programming, as well as training, making sure that educators are trained and retrained in these skills to collaborate closely and make the best use of public investments in a variety of forms. These grant outcomes have produced summer camps in engineering, computer science, Makerspace Skills, mathematics, and GIS, as well as scholarships. They also focus on STEM ambassadors, and the idea here is that they have what they call near-peer mentors. Students in college, especially those who are first generations in college, are able to reach back down to lower-grade levels and help encourage and support STEM students in their achievements, and they also offer communications and leadership training to those ambassadors. Other programs include a STEM Day that they hold at UCF, which is across the campus. Over 70 activities they offer during that day, participation in engineering competitions, and other STEM support for educators. So listed here is the fiscal year 2025 impact of the county's investment, and I should note these are preliminary numbers. The county's contracts with each of the six organizations ask them to submit draft reporting in August, at the end of August, and a report in mid-November that is the final report to account for the many events that they hold during the year, some of which come very close to the end of the fiscal year. So we will be following up on this table by offering each of you a district-specific snapshot of the impact of the investments in terms of the number of students that benefit, some of the schools, the ZIP codes from which they're drawing their attendance, and we welcome your feedback and questions on any of those items at that time and are happy to offer additional briefings if needed. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Powell of Collegiate Pathways to highlight her work in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Good afternoon, Mayor Demings, Commissioners, Administrator Brooks, and Comptroller Diamond. Thank you for the opportunity to share our impact in empowering our community to thrive in this high-tech digital economy. Collegiate Pathways is building the future workforce by transforming the lives of students to pursue STEM fields through career readiness, mentoring, and entrepreneurship. We equip students with the digital skills, entrepreneurial tools, and AI knowledge they need to grow, lead, and create lasting impact in their communities. Since 2012, Collegiate Pathways has impacted the lives of over 3,000 students. Through our Workforce Development Program in partnership with Career Source Central Florida, Pearls and Tech, high school students are equipped with programming skills such as Python and Java, and also learn the ethical use of artificial intelligence. Pearls and Tech is a full-time, five-week program during the summer where students are tasked with identifying a problem within their communities and providing a solution leveraging AI. Students presented their solutions at the end of the summer program. They created AI chatbots to provide resources for students with autism, those that are unhoused, and hurricane preparedness, just to name a few. Students also earned their Google AI Essential Certification. We have a partnership with Google to do this, in addition to a $1,200 stipend upon program completion milestones. Our partnership with Orange County Government and Orange County Public Schools allowed us to introduce STEM and provide technical training to 400 students in 17 middle and high schools in Orange County. Florida's ability to provide access and opportunity for families relies on our ability to diversify the economy. By 2033, it is expected that there will be 3.9 million computer-related job openings in the US. In Florida, our future is tied to our ability to fill those high-wage jobs. This means Florida must do an exceptional job of meeting the demands of a 21st-century economy where STEM-related jobs are likely to be among the most prominent. Technology is a great equalizer. To diversify our economy, we must close the talent gap and prepare students now for STEM-related jobs of the 21st century. In an era where students consume technology quicker than a glass of water, we must equip them not for only jobs of the future, but those that haven't even been created. And Collegiate Pathways is doing just that. We're here to close the digital divide and open the door to opportunity. Thank you, Mayor Demings, and the Board of County Commissioners for investing in our youth and the future of Central Florida.
All right, thank you, Dr. Powell. I've had the opportunity over the years, on many occasions, to engage with Dr. Powell and the Tech Sassy Girls in numerous community events where they volunteer. She's invited me to participate in their programs. Always very well organized. And she has some superstars now who have graduated from college and who are thriving, who do well, who are now giving back and uplifting others. And so I do applaud you for the work that you have been doing. And she's been doing it a long time now. She has a husband here. They own a couple of businesses. They are very successful people. I'm very proud to know them. They both are just tireless community servants. So I very humbly say to you, thank you for the work you're doing and engagement with Orange County.
Thank you, Mayor. That means a lot. And thank you for your support. I also have Ellie from our team here in the back as well.
All right, Ellie. All right, so quick draw over here. Commissioner Wilson was the first one to press her button. So Commissioner Wilson.
So thank you. Thank you both so much. Thank you for all the work you do. And I think, I thought I knew and then got this information today and realized how little I knew. So I would love maybe a follow-up meeting to expand on how we can get involved, help get more people involved, and elevate the message. I was also very piqued, my curiosity was piqued about the event at UCF and the driving of visitors, because then I'm like, wait a minute, is there a way for us to then be able to leverage that for dollars to put back into this program? So I'm going to put my thinking cap on. I would love to get together at some point and maybe go over some other details. So no big questions today, just a huge thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
Alyssa, I don't think you were finished yet, right?
I'm sorry?
I just thought about it. Alyssa, you still, your presentation.
Sure, no problem. Thank you, Dr. Powell, for those comments. And no, again, we would love to hear from our next agency.
I'm just all excited about it.
Oh, no problem. Like I said, we're happy to receive all of your comments. And we appreciate your enthusiasm, and we share it. And so happy to do that. So again, thank you, Dr. Powell. And now I'll bring to the podium Wendy Austin, the Regional Director for First Robotics. And then again, as staff, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I will make it brief, because I know y'all are tired. I do want to point out, I have Clockwork Mania here from the Orlando Science School. I have Team Gravy here. They are a community team. So they are associated with the Maker Effects Foundation, and they pull from, help me out here, eight different schools? I think that's right. Yep, and Miko was here earlier as well. I would like to point out that the grant that you give us is what I like to call a 50-50 grant. Half of the money goes to the teams. And let me tell you, these teams would not exist without it. An average budget for a First Robotics team that wants to be competitive is anywhere from $30,000 to $63,000. The majority of these teams do not get money from their schools. They have to go out and raise it all. And let me tell you, one of the skills they learn is how to market and brand their team. They create a business plan. They have a budget. They know how to do all the technical things that I don't know how to do, because I was a theater major. But let me tell you, until you watch a group of high school students walk into a CEO's office, give them a presentation, and then go, "So will that check be for $1,000 or $5,000?" How big do you want your name on the back of our shirts? I'm telling you, it's amazing. So the skills that these students learn, it's like running a small business, and they've been doing it for years. Cecily, apparently, since she was five. She was on Lego. She was one of our good ones. And then the other half goes towards the regional. The regional is a three-day event. They are 12- to 15-hour days. We bring in visitors from all over the world. This year, we are more than full. We have seven teams on our waitlist and three spots left. So I'm not sure how I'm going to do that. But we have teams coming in from Turkey, and Mexico, and the Dominican Republic, and Puerto Rico. So we do pull in quite a number of visitors who come and spend a lot of money here. They stay. They go to Disney. They go to the Space Center. They go to Universal. They go to the Science Center. A lot of things. And we work in partnership with a lot of those things. These students do, just by the nature of where we live and as many conventions and conferences that are here, we do about 35 outreaches as First over the course of a year. And then they all go out additionally and do, you know, STEM Night at the local middle school, a Girl Scout Back-to-Work shop. So they are giving back just as much as they are taking it. And we appreciate everything. And I promised I would be quick. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right, do we have any questions? Come on, Commissioner Semrad.
You guys are awesome.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I can't help it. I'm the teacher and me.
Can we get a picture with the group? I would love to get a group picture.
All right, Alyssa.
Stick around.
Sure.
Well, thank you, Wendy. And again, Dr. Powell, we are happy to answer any questions about the administration of the program, how the program moves forward after this five-year period. And again, if the board is able to take a photo, we're certainly happy to indulge that. I know we're the very last item on your agenda. And again, happy to respond to the board's question and the board's enthusiasm, again, which we share.
Okay, I don't see any indications for any additional questions. So if you're done, we'll just say, thank you for the presentation. We look forward to having regular updates. We will come down in just a few moments and take a photograph. And I'll go to the comptroller. Comptroller Diamond, do you have anything else?
Well, first of all, congratulations. I mean, you guys are really impressive. And thank you for being here this afternoon. And it's nice to hear about the good things you're doing. And Mayor, there was something you said that I've been thinking about since you said it, and I can't let it go. And when you were commenting on the grant amounts for the arts recipients, you were really focused on those numbers. You said, "Why is this one not exactly this much? And why does this one not match?" or whatnot. And you know, there's been a lot of speculation about your future. And I'm not going to comment on that so much as I will to say, with those kind of analytics, there might be room for you in the comptroller's office.
That's right. So Comptroller Diamond, it does take me back to when I first graduated from college. I worked as an accountant and auditor. And it's been so long ago.